Please get started. So we have a forum. We could certainly go ahead. I see at the top of the hour. Okay, welcome everyone. We'll call the meeting to order for town Wakefield Board of Appeals meeting on May 12, 2021. I'll ask the, well, we'll do a roll call for attendance first. Dave Batfield Chair present, Jim McVane.
Yeah.
Amy Wall.
Yeah.
Joe Pride.
Yeah.
Tom Lucy.
Yeah.
Greg McIntosh.
Yeah.
Thank you. We know Mike Feely is excused and Chip Tarbell is on his way. So with that, Amy, if you would mind reading the legal notice for us, please.
Consistent with the governor's orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, the public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public and to view and or listen to the meeting in real time. Persons who wish to do so are invited to click the following link. If you do not have a camera or microphone on your computer, you may use the following dial in number 13017158592. Meeting ID 88533875952, passcode 547946. Please only use dial in or computer and not both as the audio feedback will distort the meeting. This meeting will be audio and video recorded. One, continued hearings. Two, 21-63 Michael A. Casoli, application for a variance under section 190-66 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing an in-ground swimming pool to be located in the side yard. The property is shown as map 015 lot parcel 060 of the assessors map and is located at 28 Sweets Street. Street 3, 21-64, 21-65, 21-66, 21-67, 21-68. Creations Coffee, an application for a special permit under article 16, section 190-100D6B of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow a backlit, I'm sorry, a bracket sign. Application for a variance under article 16, section 190-99E, 190-100D2D, 190-100E dot 2A, 190-100C dot 2A of the Wakefield zoning bylaw related to signage. The property is shown as map 17 lot parcels 147A of the assessors map and is located at 400 Main Street. For 21-69 Brianna Semenza Bishop, application for a variance under article 10, section 190-66 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing in addition to be constructed onto an existing dwelling. The property is shown as map 39 lot parcels D4 of the assessors map and is located at 7 Baby Lane. Five, 21-70, 21-71 Joseph E. Martin and Mary K. Martin. Application for determination and or finding with respect to a continuation and extension of non-conforming uses under section 190-50 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw to allow a one-story addition application for a variance under article 6, section 190-34 and table 2 of the Wakefield zoning bylaw, allowing a one-story addition requiring a side yard variance due to an odd shape, an odd lot shape. The property is shown as map 37 lot parcels C10A of the assessors map and is located at 11 Coolidge Park, Board of Appeals.
Thank you, Amy.
You're welcome.
All right. All right. As you can see, it's a busy agenda again, including several continued hearings from previous meetings. We've received some correspondence from applicants and or their attorneys requesting continuances from this evening's hearing. So we'll take those up first in case is anyone is here for those specific hearings. We'll, we'll take those up now. From attorney Brian McGrail dated May 12, 2021 regarding Crescent Commons Development LLC, 44, 46, and 48 Crescent Street, Wakefield, Mass., case number 21-37. Dear Mr. Chair, we're we are scheduled to be back before the Wakefield Traffic Advisory Committee on May 21st. We would also like to continue our meetings with the board's appointed subcommittee on this matter. Thus, please continue this matter until our hearing on June 9th, 2021, in order to provide time for those, those meetings to occur. So entertain a motion in a second to continue to June 9th.
I'll move that we continue to June 9th.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Jim?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
And I vote yes. Okay. So if anyone's here for Crescent Commons again, that has been continued to June 9th. Next, from attorney Brian McGrail dated May 12, regarding SGD Management Group LLC at 97 to 99 Water Street, Wakefield, Mass., case numbers 21-43 and 44, requesting that we continue the matter again to June 9th. Recently notified that the Wakefield Municipal Gas and Light Department need to make some revisions to the design of the building to account for the close proximity of overhead electrical wires. So Chair will entertain a motion a second to continue that hearing to June 9th.
I move we continue to June 9th.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Jim?
Yeah.
Joe?
Hi.
And Greg?
Hi.
I vote yes. All right. So that's unanimous. So anyone's here for that, that will be heard June 9th. Regarding, this was from Ralph Penny, manager at Albion Street Reborn LLC, regarding case numbers 21, 54, 55, 56, and 57. Requesting the yes and issue still to resolve. Can we please continue the hearing until May 26th?
I move we continue to make 26th.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on that? All in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
And I vote yes. So that's who's unanimous. Anyone here for 13 to 15 Albion? That'll be heard at our next hearing in May. Excuse me. And lastly, yep, last one. Yes, second, last one. Regarding Davy Lane, one of our new hearings, case 21-69. We heard from the applicant, Ms. Bishop, requesting that we continue our hearing to June 9th. Architect is still continuing to work on the final design of the project. So.
Move we continue to June 9th.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
Yes, so that as yet unopened hearing will perhaps be opened at our June 9th hearing. So with that, we will proceed into the rest of the agenda. At the request of counsel, on behalf of the applicants, we've received a request to adjust the order in which we take the hearings this evening. Specifically, we will hear one of the new hearings first as requested by the attorney, Michael McCarthy. This is 21-70 and 21-71 Joseph E. Martin and Mary K. Martin at Luggins Coolidge Park. So Mike, welcome. Is he frozen? Looks like his video is frozen. Or he's in real deep thought. Oh, there he is. Mike, you with us?
Yes, I lost the connection there for a second.
Oh, no worries. Glad to have you back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you indicated, I represent Joseph and Mary Martin in relation to their property located at 11 Coolidge Park. Well, as he's known. And why Mary are
Mike, Mike, sorry. Mike, your audio is breaking up.
Has Chris from C Beauty Design with the
Mike, your audio is breaking up. We can hardly make out what you're saying.
A little frozen. So I might just help out a little bit here. I'm the, I'm the one who's designing, I did design for the plans. Well, Mike's, when Mike's ready to jump back in, I'll just be a temporary fill-in.
Okay.
Are you back, Mike?
I'm back, yeah.
Sorry about that.
That's okay. Can you hear me okay, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, that's better. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, thank you. So I don't know where quite where I cut off, but
Right at the beginning.
All right, Joe, known, Joe, known as Bo and Mary Martin are the owners of 11 Coolidge Park. They've lived there since 1996, I believe. They're joining us via Zoom. Chris Crump from CWC Design, who did the layout of the proposed addition, is also joining us via Zoom. So 11 Coolidge Park, Mr. Chairman, if I could screen share, I'd just like to refer to the site point. Thank you.
Sure, you should be able to grab it.
Thank you. Can you see that okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. So it has 70 feet of frontage, which makes it a non-conforming lot. It's got more than adequate area at 14,000. But as you can see, it's a hammer-shaped lot. It's got some odd lot angles here, which essentially on this, on the right side, we're talking about extending a sun porch and coming no closer to the sideline. So that's just the extension of a non-conformity. No new non-conformity on the left side because of a lot of odd lot angles. And it's kind of hard to see, but I'm going to blow it up in the hopes of illuminating it a little bit better. Inside the larger blocks, which is the whole of the proposed addition, is a shaded area right in here, which is the existing part of the, of the structure. So this rear portion in the back would be added, but because of the lot lines and the location of the house in relation to the lot lines, it would go from an existing 11.1 that'll be maintained, but it gets slightly less de minimis, you know, in terms of context down to 11.0 in terms of the set, the the side yard setback over there. So that's a slight, slight increase, but it does necessitate a variance. So that's why the request for the variance, but I wanted to highlight that it's very de minimis in nature. The other thing I wanted to point out is this overhead, which I hope you can see from Google Earth. So this is the subject house and this is
We're not seeing it.
Oh, you're not? Okay.
If you just shared the one app, you might have to share.
Can you see that?
Yes.
All right. So there's 11 Coolidge Park. I just wanted to highlight that on the side where the, you know, the addition is going to stay one story. But it would extend toward the rear here. But here's, here's a white fence that's existing. You know, buffered area out here is most likely part of the right of way and then, and then a right of way. So there's really, you know, there's really good buffering on that side. I would also add that Mr. Martin has talked to us abouters and we believe that there is no objection to the proposed addition. So that kind of it frames the context of the lot and the nature of the relief that we're asking for. It really isn't adding much in terms of either extending the non-conformity or just requesting that one, one inch or 1.2 inches, whether it's an inch or a tenth of a foot that we're asking for. It's very de minimis. So without Mr. Chairman having kind of set the issue, defer if I could to Mr. Crump, who's the designer, just to kind of walk through the, walk through the plans and hopefully answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Thank you, Mike. So if I can just share my screen unless that board has it.
No, please, please share if you can.
Okay, sure. So the, the plans that I have here, so this is the existing house on the first floor. The addition that we're talking, this is the, this is the side of the house in question. So this is the street, this would be the street out front up here. This is called, Close Park out here. This is the addition over on the side. We're going to be remodeling all of this interior footprint here and then we'll be adding the addition out towards the back of the house here. And then we'll put in a small sunroom addition on the back left-hand side of the house on this side. This is the existing rear elevation. This is a side profile of the existing side of the house, that bump out on the side of the house on the left-hand side that we're talking about. So you can see what the existing roof lines and so forth are. So the addition would be this portion right here that we're adding on to the existing footprint. Basically creating first floor living space for the owner so they can age in place as well as a sunroom on the other side. It's just an open room. And moving forward, this would be the rear of the house, rear view of the house and the side profile. So the existing roof, the existing roof line would change slightly, but it's just one big roof line that comes all the way down to the backside. And we would eliminate a window that's already there for the second floor. And this is just a section through, not really pertinent for what we're doing for, for this conversation, but just to give you an idea of what we're constructing and what we're, we're looking to do. And that, that pretty much is the whole idea concept up here. So as Attorney McCarthy has mentioned, you know, it does narrow a little bit on the sideline of the side setback by point one feet as you get closer to, towards the back of the house, which is why we're here. Plus, it's a non-conforming, a pre-existing non-conformity as is already. So if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Okay, thank you. Board members, anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I got one quick question for Chris. On your plans, it doesn't, I mean, on the plot plan showing a porch in the front, but you really don't have that drawn on any of your plans?
The, oh, yeah. Yep, you are correct. I didn't. So the porch would be out in front here. I don't have it shown on this plan right here. You're correct.
Is that existing or is it?
It is. It is existing. You won't be touching that. So I, we didn't measure that existing front porch on there, but we wouldn't be touching the existing front porch.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, I have one question too. Mike, you said that you believe that the abutters don't have, have any problems? Did you? Yeah, I think a lot of times we see something signed by the abutters or anything. Do you have any documentation of that?
We don't have any documentation. Mr. Biden is here and he could certainly attest to it, but kind of as an offer proof. He, he talked to us at my request and suggestion. He talked to four of his abutters, the most directly affected. Certainly he can tell you that he had a person-to-person face-to-face discussion with each of them and they had no problem. But no, we didn't, we don't have a letter or anything. You can give that whatever way you deem appropriate, but.
Sometimes we get them in the file. They're sent to us, but we have nothing.
Right.
Greg, you don't know the history of this area, but the units that are out behind there basically was quite controversial. So it, there was a lot of opposition within the neighborhood for the development of that space of land back there and sticking multi-housing units out there. So you know, I don't personally, given the, given the history, I don't see any issue particularly on that side with the fact they're extending the, they're extending any unit, they're not up against any other buildings. They're up against basically an access road into that area. And so I'm perfectly fine basically with what they, what they want to do, quite frankly.
Okay, thank you, Jim. Anyone else? All right, I will say that for the record, we did get correspondence from Fire Department Chief Sullivan, who reviewed the plans and they have no objections. Concom not within their jurisdiction, so requires no further review from them and from the town engineer. No comments at this time, so. Have to receive the town board correspondence. From my perspective, again, I understand the, the desire and the need to, to expand your living space and want to stay in your home. You know, I see no issue whatsoever with the, the additions. Again, as Attorney McCarthy pointed out, the the addition on the, on the left side is de minimis. It's, it's, you know, basically the same setback. And the one on the, on the sun porch is clearly the same according to the plan. So again, given the circumstances, I have, I have no problem with it either. Anything else, board members, before we open it up? Just in case there are abutters here, they may want to speak for themselves. Or the Martins, did the Martins, Mr. and Ms. Martin, do you want to add anything before we open it up to the public? It's up to you. Just want to give you the opportunity.
No, we have nothing to add.
Okay, fair enough. All right, we'll open up the public testimony. If anyone does have a comment or question about this, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I will try to call anyone order. We need no hands. We'll close it to public testimony. So back to the board. So Michael, you did two applications, one, the finding.
Right.
Mainly for both additions. Continuing non-conforming existing structure and the variance for the left side by point one feet.
Right. I think with respect to the non-conforming, it meets the first prong, which is on the right, it's not creating any new non-conformity. And with respect to the variance in the left side, I think the variance takes care of everything on the left side.
Yep, yep. Okay, so this would be a 19050A.
Right.
Just requiring the first prong. If the board were to find, yes, I agree. So anyone care to make a motion?
Dave?
Yeah, Tom was on mute.
I was on mute. Sorry about that. Hey, if I'm voting on it, I'll, I'll try to wing it.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll start with the non-conforming first.
Okay.
I move that we grant a finding and determination pursuant to section 19050A of the bylaw that the proposed reconstruction change or extension or alteration at 11 Coolidge Park based on the plans filed by CWC Design dated 11521 shall not increase the existing non-conforming nature of said structure.
Okay.
Second.
Thank you.
There is on mute too.
Any discussion on that motion? All right. So the voting members would be Tom, Amy, Joe, Jim, and I, all in favor, Tom?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Joe?
Yes.
Jim?
Hi.
And I vote I. So that passes unanimously. Next, the variance.
Yeah, I move that we grant a variance pursuant to section to article six, section 19034 of the bylaw to Joseph E. Martin and Mary K. Martin based on plan from CWC Design dated 11521 to allow the side yard variance owing to circumstances related to soil conditions, shape or topography of such land or structures, and a little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner, and that the desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent and purpose of this chapter. Given what we heard, I don't see any condition. So I guess that's my motion.
Second.
Do you have any discussion on that motion? All right, same voting members, Tom?
Hi.
Amy?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
And I also vote yes. Yeah, I mean, the standard conditions, Mike, will probably apply as we, you know, adherence to plans and so forth. But beyond that, I think, yeah, Tom, to your point, we're covered. I think there wasn't a lot to this, so.
Understood, understood. I'll run that by you.
Yep.
On behalf of the Martins and myself, thank you very much and good luck tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to you. Have a good night.
Dave?
Yes, sir.
Would the board consider one up, one further, which has to do with 400 Main Street? Considering that ahead of the rest of the stuff that's going to take longer?
Is it?
It's just signage, although there's, because of the complicated nature of it, there are, I guess, about five items that need passing or consideration. It's a new business.
Yeah, I see it. Is this one of yours, Brian?
No, he's representing himself.
Oh, okay. I just forgot because, okay. Other than the one, Mike, we just did. I thought Brian had most of the rest.
Brian doesn't mind. I, I don't think we need John up all night.
I'm, I'm okay with that. If Brian, you're okay with us taking this one ahead of, I think the rest are probably yours.
I have, I, I have no issue with that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I think one of the reasons we moved things around was you were waiting to party with one of your teams. So
I'm waiting for one of my team members and I think it's an accommodation to these folks. There's a lot of stuff that might take a little bit of time. So I would actually advocate for them going first.
Okay. All right, then I'm fine. So with that, we will take a new hearing. 21-64, 65, 66, 67, and 68 Creations Coffee at 400 Main Street.
John, you want to do a presentation on your stuff?
Yes, yes. Thank, thanks, everyone, for allowing us to make a presentation tonight. Just by way of context, we're the new owners of Creations Cafe. We've changed the name to Creations Coffee. Took ownership in September of last year. And I don't know if anyone's been in for a cup of coffee, but we remodeled and improved, I think, the operation since then, and we would like to upgrade the signage as well. I'm going to try this fancy screen share thing here. There, did that work?
Not yet. I don't, I'm not seeing it.
That's okay. Hold on. Screen share.
Yeah, after you click it, you'll have to pick something, either your entire screen or maybe one of your open applications.
Oh, okay.
Whatever has the plans. And for the record, welcome, Mr. Tarbell. You're now in the meeting. It's coming up.
Yeah, but I don't think that's what I can't seem to share what I want to share. I can do. Share screen. Oh, here we go. Try this. That up now?
Yes.
All right. So here, here's what we would like to do in, in terms of signage is the, the existing sign is right there in the same, in the sign band. It's actually slightly larger. It's like 15 years old, basically just changing the name and, and moving to our logo. Chris Markarian is doing the work for the sign shop. The, the sign is actually conforming in square footage. It's 15 square feet as required according to the code, but the reason it requires a variance is because our building is fairly narrow. And so even at 15 square feet, it extends to be more than two-thirds of the width of the building. So that is the first request. We'd like to, to ask for a variance so that we can do a 15 square foot sign there. The second thing we'd like to do is put a bracket sign along the sidewalk extending out. Here's the bracket sign here that we'd like to do. It's, it's also conforming in the, to the code in terms of the size, which is three by three. It requires a special permit for a bracket sign and it requires a variance. I guess, although the language is somewhat ambiguous, is we'd like to use this bracket, which is the language, Jim, can you remember that? It's like a decorative, the code calls for decorative.
Open metalwork. I mean, you can, I know what the intent was. I'm not sure. As you point out, it's not clear. Yeah. But I, but I, I have written it in, into what you're requesting basically. So clearly what you're showing, basically, at least the board understands.
Yeah, and we, we just think this matches the, the, the design of the sign better than a squirrely Yeah, and we, we just think this matches the, the, the design of the sign better than a squirrely. More old fashioned sort of bracket. And then the last thing we wanted to request. So I probably have to exit somehow to pull up the other one, which is just a. Uh, can you see that? Probably not.
No.
Can you get down the screen?
Uh, uh, no, this is all I have, Jim. It's, it's basically. Uh, we want to just do a decal sign for the window with our logo. And it, the size that we're requesting is actually slightly larger than allowed. The allowance is ten percent of the area and with the size that we've, um, were requesting, it's about thirteen percent.
Fourteen percent.
Fourteen percent. So, uh, those are what we're requesting. In total, it requires one more variance because the total square, square footage of all of those things, put the, when added together. Also exceeds what's allowed under the code.
Yes.
And so the, the sum total of that is four variances and one special permit.
Okay. Makes sense, clear enough. Jim, do you want anything with the design review board?
Um, diet, design review board, as you know, because I tend to support this. Um, this is one of those cases with, once we revise the, the signage code, more control will be given to the board and we wouldn't be here tonight bothering this board. Uh, with these things, but anyways, here we are. Um, and we've got five items. I've got them all written up so we can vote on each one, basically, if you'd like to proceed.
Okay. Okay, I've got that letter on the file. Any other comments, questions, board, other board members?
I would just, I'm going to recuse myself from this, but I just. Jim, I mean, we're front on, we've got Creations Coffee, four different places. On about ten feet of space. Is it really necessary to have the name that many times on this little storefront?
I think what they've done is creative enough. Yeah, we, we discussed a lot of this, basically decided it was better than what was there and it, it basically is appropriate to what they're trying to do. Basically, so, and I, I'd like to see actually more bracket signs on, in town. We don't have very many, but, you know, so.
I didn't have, I don't have any trouble with the bracket sign. I guess I've just. The, the name over the building, the name on both windows and the bracket sign. It seems like.
Yeah, sorry, sorry. For both windows, just on the door.
Yeah.
The door would be back here.
There's a logo, there's a logo that goes on the door, Chip, but there's nothing on the windows.
Okay, all right.
So you've got, you've got a wall sign, a bracket sign, and one.
And a door, and a door sign.
A door sign, yes.
Okay. All right, I feel better. Thank you.
Well, I would agree. I, I think it would be too much if we want.
Good, that's why you didn't propose it.
We actually have some little seating right here, and so we like the fact that people can see that there's folks in the restaurant.
Which is appropriate, basically. People be seen, people can see. So if that's it, and anybody have any issues within the board?
All right. Hearing nothing, I will just. The other correspondence, the fire department. Again, no objections, Concom not in their jurisdictions, no further review, DPW, no comments at this time. Nothing else, board members, we can open up to public testimony. If anyone has a comment or question, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting and I will call on you in the order in which I see them. Seeing no hands. More people waving in their screens. We'll close it to public testimony. So back to the board. There are five votes needed here, one for each of those. As, as the applicant said, each of the variances with each of the paragraphs. And the special permit.
Dave, I'm going to recuse myself as, as the computer went out on me for that little bit during the presentation.
Okay. All right. So, I don't know.
I, I will recuse myself as well, except that I'll read the motions.
Well, yeah, I would prefer the person making the motion. We're actually voting on them.
Well, then we'll do that, but it's not normal, the case, normally the case.
Well, we can have somebody, another board member willing to step up and make motions. We just need five of them.
Well, since I've got them, got them all written out and we want to keep this moving along, I guess I'm voting.
Okay, so please proceed then.
All right. So the first motion is on the bracket, on the projecting bracket sign. So Grant, looking for the board to grant permission for erection of an, the erection of a nine square foot projecting bracket sign. Under special permit is allowed under Article one ninety dash ninety nine E and Table one and special provisions under one ninety dash one hundred D six B. That's the motion.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, let's see, so just accusing. Greg, do you want this one?
Sure.
All right. So voting members, myself, Jim, Amy, Joe, and Greg. Um, so all in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Amy.
Hi.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, so that one passes. Next, Jim.
Uh, next one is. When projecting bracket sign again, grant permission to erect a projecting bracket sign. It is not an open ironwork. Uh, pattern as requ, as required on Article one ninety dash one hundred D two D.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right, so this one's the special permit. You said grant permission, but it's.
This is not, this is not part of the special permit. The only, the, only the last one was. So this is grant, granting permission to erect a project's projecting bracket sign that is not an open ironwork pattern. Is required under Article one ninety dash one hundred D two D.
Oh, so the previous one was a special permit. Okay, got it. All the rest of these are variances. Okay, got it. All right. Any other discussion? All right, same voting members, Jim.
Yes.
Amy.
Hi.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that two is unanimous. Next.
Wall sign, variance to provide relief from Article one ninety dash one hundred C two A to allow wall sign to exceed. Required two thirds with of the business storefront. By five and a quarter feet to a total width of twelve point seven five feet.
Do any discussion on that motion? Okay, same voting members, Jim.
I.
Amy.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Greg.
Yes.
And I'm also vote yes. So that two passes unanimously. Next.
Window sign, grant of variance to provide leave from one ninety dash ninety nine E, table and table one. And one ninety dash one hundred E two A to allow door window sign is to exceed required ten percent glass area. To allow it to be set at fourteen square, fourteen percent for the glass, for that glass area.
Do I need discussion on that motion? All right, same voting members, Jim.
Yes.
Amy.
Yeah.
Joe.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes. That two is unanimous. And lastly.
Aggregate area, grant of variance for relief from one ninety dash ninety nine E for a total allowed. Sign aggregate area of sixteen point six square feet. And it's. To allow it to be twenty four square feet.
Second.
No, any discussion on that motion? Same voting members, Jim.
I.
Amy.
Hi.
Joe.
Hi.
Greg.
Yes.
And I vote yes. So that two is unanimous. Okay, so that's all five applications pass unanimously. Good luck with your business and thank you for attending tonight.
Yeah, thank you very much and thank you for moving me up on the agenda. Very much appreciated.
Happy to accommodate. Good luck to you, sir.
Thank you.
Love.
We'll see at the store, I'm sure. All right. All right, Brian. We are going to Quanapower next.
Please, so, Mr. Chair.
Okay, yeah, just again, as requested. Okay. So the next continued hearing, twenty one dash fifty, fifty one and fifty two CCF Quanapower Property Company LLC at two hundred to four hundred Quanapower Parkway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail representing CCF Quanapower Property Company LLC. The applicant regarding property at two hundred dash four hundred Quanapower Parkway. Um, with me tonight is Attorney Peter Tam from the law firm of Gulston and Storrs, who is serving as co-counsel to me on this matter. Uh, Matt D'Amico and John Sullivan, along with Toby Banter on behalf of the applicant LLC. Nick Delacova from Allen and Major, uh, who is our site civil. Is here, even though it's not a site civil night, we wanted to make him available in case any civil questions come up related to the architecture. That will be presented. Ian Ramey from Copley Wolf Design Group is also here, uh, in, also, uh, just, uh, in case some question comes up. Relating to landscaping pertaining to architecture that's presented. Um, the main presenter tonight will be, um, Ally Adams of Cube Free Architects, because, uh, as you know. Main focus on tonight's, uh, hearing is architecture in design. As you go through, as Ally goes through, uh, her presentation tonight. There'll be some elevations and renderings, uh, that you will see, and I want to stress, and I think Ally will touch upon this also. That everything is accurately depicted, uh, it, it appropriately incorporate incorporates the proposed landscaping. So the, um, the, any renderings that you see are in sync with the landscaping plans, uh, that have been proposed. Since they are so closely related, um, we thought that, uh, you know, that's always something that the board looks for to make sure that, uh, we're not showing something that would be reality at the end of the day. Uh, when the project, uh, would be constructed. So if I could. I guess go to, before we get into the architecture, if you could go to the next slide, Ally. Mr. Chair, you would ask me to, um, to touch on, uh, the zoning, um, details. You wanted me to make a presentation on how this project is qualified pursuant to cer, certain requirements of our zoning bylaw. Um, so if it's okay with you, I'd like to go through that process before Ally gets into architecture.
Or another board members, yeah, I just thought it would be good, um, to, to serve as a good baseline to understand based on the current proposed design. Um, and the applicant's application for, uh, relief from one ninety thirty two dash one. That gives the board some discretion to review, um, and either alter or reduce some of the dimensional requirements. I think it would, I, I thought it would be helpful to start with their current design and understand from, from, uh, the applicant. Kind of where we stand relative to those current requirements, right? So, but with that, I would, yeah, Brian, please proceed.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this, um, this application and project is, is being permitted pursuant to section one ninety dash thirty two of our zoning bylaw. Uh, and that bylaw has a certain, um, requirements that, um, it calls to be met to qualify. Uh, to be, um, before you on a project of this nature. Um, the first, um, section, uh, that the chair requested that I address is section one ninety dash thirty two, which deals with minimum lot size intensity. Um, and what that section requires that any project that involves any multifamily or mixed use has to have a lot size of four thousand square feet. Um, a lot of these types of projects are in the downtown business district. Um, so, you know, basically that's the low square footage, obviously, as you'll see when we get into the zoning table in a little bit. This project, uh, greatly qualifies under that requirement. Uh, the second, uh, requirement under one ninety thirty two B is section two. Which states where housing, whether mid-rise apartments, garden apartments, attached dwellings, accommodations of the same. Are proposed within walking distance of a commuter rail station that's twenty five hundred. Foot radius from a commuter rail station's bordering area to the nearest lot line of the parcel, a minimum of seven hundred fifty square feet. Of lot area per unit is required. Otherwise, a minimum of twelve hundred square feet of lot area per unit is required. Um, this is a combination. Um, there is a combination on this site. Of, uh, mid-rise apartments, as you know, there's one four-story building proposed and two three-story. Four-story under the definitions now by law, uh, is a mid-rise apartment and a three-story or less is garden apartment. So we have a combination of both, which is allowed under the bylaw. Uh, this property is well over, uh, twenty five hundred, uh, feet from the commuter rail station. So the requirement on this, uh, project is twelve hundred square feet of lot area per unit. And I'm going to show you a table in a little bit, which shows that this project easily qualifies under that section of the bylaw. Next, um, section one ninety thirty two C, parking areas and open spaces for multifamily dwellings. Under section one, no open parking or driveway shall be closer than twelve feet to a wall containing windows to habitable rooms of a dwelling unit. Which is on the ground floor or basement floor. This shall not apply, however, to the following. To an individual driveway exclusively, exclusively serving a single unit into a dwelling or underground or structured parking. We're very careful in our design and all of our surface parking spaces, uh, which are very few, um, when you look at the totality. Uh, meet this requirement and, uh, the rest of our parking spaces, uh, as you know, are in a wrapped parking garage, structured parking. Section two. Of this, uh, of this, uh, section of the bylaw, subparagraph two. States at least thirty percent of the total area of the multifamily dwelling complex shall be maintained as open area. Uh, open areas defined in our bylaw, uh, and again, you will see momentarily that we, um, far exceed that requirement. So one ninety thirty two in table two, uh, the, uh, of our bylaw really, um, deal with. Uh, the dimensional aspects of a project of this nature. Um, and so I'm going to kind of walk us through here. Uh, minimum lot area, um, if you look at, uh, to, to the far three columns from mid-rise apartment. Garden apartment, four thousand square feet, as we just heard, as I presented. And then in the limited business district, which is the underlying zoning district for this property. Required square footage for a lot is forty thousand square feet. Uh, this lot is twenty three point nine seven acres. It's enormous. One million forty four thousand three hundred ninety seven square feet. So obviously that requirement is met, uh, for the mid-rise garden and for the underlying zoning district, the limited business district. Uh, floor area ratio is next. Um, we are proposing, as you can see from proposed, I mean, existing is there. It's really not that relevant because. The site is, the building is being removed. It's not being reused. So we're proposing a floor area ratio of point four eight. Um, there is no floor area ratio requirement under section one ninety thirty two D. Uh, but there is, uh, one under table two for limited business, business district, which is one point two five. Um, we're well within compliance at point four eight on that requirement. As far as the density goes. Um, what we're proposing is, uh, four hundred eighty five units. Uh, that's one unit for every two thousand one hundred fifty three square feet. As I mentioned, uh, earlier, uh, the requirement, because we are, uh, over twenty five hundred feet from the, uh, railroad. Station is, um, twelve hundred square feet per unit. Um, we, we would qualify for eight hundred and seventy units on a property of this size. Uh, as I've mentioned, our application is for four eighty five, so we're in compliance on that. Uh, frontage and lot width. Uh, we are over, well over one hundred and eighty feet. Uh, for mid-rise apartment, the requirement is one eighty, garden apartment is less one fifty. And that matches what the underlying district is at one fifty, so we're fully in compliance with frontage and lot width. Uh, front yard setback. Front yard setback, uh, we're proposing fifty seven feet. Um, and the requirement on the, uh, mid-rise apartment is thirty feet or the height of the building. We're just rounding this to fifty. We, we believe we're going to be less than fifty, but we're just saying fifty. Um, and then on the garden apartment, you can actually be closer because it's either thirty feet or the height of the building. Our buildings are going to be thirty five feet or less on those three-story buildings. The required, uh, on the underlying district, the limited business is twenty. The required on the underlying district, the limited business is twenty. Our property, our closest building to the frontage is fifty seven point nine feet. So we are well within compliance on that requirement. As far as side yard setback, that is the same, side and rear, all, all the same, except for the limited business, you actually can be closer at twenty. But the closest we are to any side yard is fifty seven point nine feet. So well within compliance, the other side yard is like, I think it's hundreds of feet, because it goes through that wooded portion of the property that you saw on the last presentation. Rear setback, we're at fifty four point eight feet. Well, well, within compliance on all of the mid-rise, the garden, and the underlying zoning requirement. Under one ninety thirty two D, there is also a requirement of distance between buildings, so it's contemplated if you have more than one building on the lot, there has to be a certain distance between them. And the requirement is fifty, for the mid-rise apartment is fifty feet or the height of the building, which is ever, which is ever, whichever is greater, we're just rounding it at fifty, because we're going to be right in that area. Garden apartment is also fifty feet, and there is no requirement in the limited business district. The three buildings that we're proposing, the closest point that any one is to another is sixty three point four feet. So we meet all requirements there. Building, as far as the building stories go, mid-rise apartment is, that we're proposing is four, garden apartment is three. That's allowed, we're within the requirements. Building height, actually, the existing building, as you'll see through the presentation, has a height of fifty seven point five feet. That's only one portion of the building, it's kind of the tower area that, you know, I think we're all familiar with this property in the building, we've been looking at it for enough years, so there's kind of like a middle portion that Ally will, will touch on, not the entire building, but that portion is fifty seven point five feet. We're estimating our mid-rise, four-story building will be forty eight point five, garden won't be higher than thirty five, probably less. And the mid-rise can be up to fifty feet. The garden can be up to thirty five feet, and in the underlying district, it can be up to fifty. So we will be compliant with the height requirement. Building coverage. So you're allowed in the mid-rise apartment district to have thirty five percent max. Garden is the same, and you can actually in the underlying district have forty percent. As you can see, we're proposing only seventeen percent building coverage. Interestingly, the existing building is fourteen percent, so that's really not too far off. As far as open area goes, this is interesting when you look at the old building, because currently, there's only sixty percent open area on that lot, we're proposing to increase that by ten percent open area to seventy percent. In the mid-rise apartment district, you have to have a minimum of thirty percent. And in the garden apartment, thirty percent, and also the underlying thirty percent, so we're, we're more than double the requirement for open area. So as far as the dimension goes, I mean, where we are now, we've applied for relief under one ninety thirty two point one, Mr. Chair, because you alluded to that, that your board has authority when you deem appropriate or necessary to grant relief for dimensional requirements. This property is somewhat unique, because we're not requesting any at this point. The plans as submitted meet all of the dimensional requirements, not only of the underlying district, but also of the multifamily requirements under one ninety thirty two D. That could change depending on, you know, the direction this takes, requirements or requests of the board to move things around. But as of now, we are in full compliance. If you go to the next slide, Ally, as far as parking goes, I wanted to touch on this, I think at the last meeting, one of the board members wanted to know the makeup, because Ally just talked about percentages on the number, the number, the breakdown of the bedrooms. And this chart on the right shows you, I, I'll, just for, you can see the different breakout in the buildings and the top portion, but as far as the site as a whole goes, out of the four hundred eighty five units, fifty seven are going to be studio, which would be the same as a one-bedroom. Then there would be actual one-bedroom units, there'll be two hundred and seventy five. So, you know, that's pretty important, when you look at this, the, the breakdown of it, about sixty, sixty seven percent are going to be not two or three bedroom units, which has an impact on, you know, the, the, the use of the site. Hundred and thirty three will be two bedrooms, and twenty will be three bedrooms for a total of four hundred and eighty five. Ally, can you blow this up a little bit? Get me to the left side, if you could. And a little higher. Great, thank you. So as far as the parking requirements go, on the two, on the two-bedroom or fewer, we're required to have one and a half parking spaces per unit. On the three bedrooms, we're required to have two parking spaces. So you, you can see, and then for the, for the cafe, when you do the calculations out, we're required to have nine parking spaces based on the maximum number of employees and twenty five seats that we're proposing. So, and for the four-bedroom, I'm sorry, for the one-bedroom and studio apartments, the total requirement, when you look at those, is five hundred, is, can you blow it up a little bit more, Ally? Because I'm having a hard time.
Six ninety eight, I think it says.
Thank you, yeah, six ninety eight. For the three-bedroom, it's forty, and for the proposed restaurant use is nine spaces. So it's a total of seven hundred and forty seven spaces, and that's what we're providing. An interesting thing that, if you note on the bottom of the table, it says existing to remain. And what that's alluding to, it's really in addition to those seven hundred and forty seven. At the end of our property, as you head out on Lowell Street, there's that little parking lot across from Spalding Park in kind of where the Frankfurt vendor sets up. A lot of people park there, that is my client's property, it currently contains twenty three parking spaces. We haven't, we haven't counted those in our count. I spoke with town council on this, because I, I thought there might be some type of lease agreement regarding with the town, because so many townspeople use it, that was confirmed to me that there is not anything. So, you know, one of the things we've actually, we actually talked to the Friends of the Lake on this, that I think is this whole process proceeds, I think we're going to probably talk about trying to provide some parking for the public that wants to use this wonderful park space that will be created. And I think a good place to start might be with these twenty three parking spaces that we could maybe talk about making some type of formal commitment or use, instead of just kind of having the informality that, that exists today. So, as you can see, we, we do meet the parking requirement. As far as our parking goes, out of all those spaces, five hundred and thirty two garage spaces are, are there. So a significant portion of our parking is inside that wrapped garage with a major reduction from surface parking on what exists today. And, you know, we went through that unit count, I, I've mentioned in the initial presentation that eighty seven of these units out of the four hundred and eighty five will be low moderate income units qualified. They will go towards our S H I forty B count, and will provide much-needed housing to folks in Wakefield, in this surrounding area with priority to Wakefield qualified people. So that's a pretty large number out of four eighty five, eighty seven units that will be affordable. Those will be proportionately broken down. So it's not like they would all be one bedroom or studio, they have, they have to be proportionate, the D H C D requires that. And they also have to be spread throughout the project, so it's not like you put them all in one building or one area. They'll be uniformly spread out throughout the project, and the D H C D participates in the review of that. So I think that covers it, Mr. Chair, as far as what you would ask me to do. But we are in compliance with the requirements of the bylaw, and we are qualified to be before you on this project. With that said, I would like to kind of move on to the next aspect of tonight's goal to present, to get into the architectural design, and I'm going to hand it over to Ally.
Sounds good, thank you, Brian, for doing that.
Thank you, Brian, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Hello, everyone, I'm Ally Adams, I'm an architect at Cube Three. So I'm starting off this week where we left off two weeks ago with these design objectives. And tonight, we're really going to focus on points four through seven, which are, you know, number four, to provide dedicated interior space for public use. Five, lower the height along the lake. Six, position the rear building to screen route one twenty eight noise. And seven, to provide, provide affordable housing. So as Brian just mentioned, we'll be providing eighty seven affordable housing units, which is actually the equivalent to building one, so if you can visualize on the site, one building is the equivalent number that we will be providing, but they will be spread out equally based on unit type and locations on the site. So first, we're going to quickly go through the existing conditions. We did this last time, I just want to reorient everyone, and I think it'll be helpful when we start to look at context views at the end. So jumping right into it, our site is outlined here in red, most of you are familiar with the location. It abuts route one twenty eight to the north and the public land to the south, and that public land is, is including of the existing lake path. And we're also within walking distance to downtown Wakefield, we're just over a mile and a half away. So jumping in here, I just wanted to point out some of the nearby developments, Lakeside Park, one hundred Quantapowit, and across route one twenty eight, the Home Depot in Jordan. I think the important thing to note here, as I go to the next screen, is that looking at these building footprints, they are large buildings that kind of sit within a sea of parking, which includes our existing site. And what we want to do with our proposal is to change that precedent that has been developed on this side of the lake by prioritizing green space on these, on these larger format sites for Wakefield. I'm zooming in a little bit further here, looking just at our existing building and at our neighbor at one hundred Quantapowit. One hundred Q P is largely a fifty three foot building, it's four floors, I believe, and it does have that clock tower that's going up to seventy nine feet in that small area. In our existing building, in, along the lake, we're ranging from sixteen feet to twenty eight feet. We do have that one tower that comes up to fifty seven feet, which will also be mentioned in our earlier context view, so I'm just trying to get everyone situated with what's there currently. So with that, we're going to move into the site plan. So here's our proposed site plan. Last week, we introduced the cafe on the southern corner of the site, as well as the public safety office in building one, which you can see in red. For tonight, we've added the yellow fill to identify the amenity spaces in each building. So the smaller spaces in building one are going to be really only used by the residents of those particular buildings, a lounge, maybe a mailroom, something to keep these buildings operating. And building three will have the primary amenity space for all of the buildings, which will include the leasing center, and it's adjacent to the primary amenity courtyard. That courtyard is one of three in this rear building, so the two landscape courtyards on the side are used to open up the building towards the neighborhood road. The next series of slides, just kind of, we want to show you how the buildings operate and how people are using the site before we get into exterior design. So this is for vehicular circulation. Most vehicles coming to the site are going to use this perimeter driveway, and the entry point to the garage is located here, facing route one twenty eight. So along this back portion of the driveway, we've also included two loading zones. So you can see labeled B three trash pickup. That's an area for a trash truck to pull off and load. And then moving further down, we have a moving loading zone, which will just be for ease of in and out, moving is located near one of the elevators in the building. Moving down closer to the neighborhood road, this is a slower speed road. So traffic will be dampened not only by the perpendicular parking spaces that are included on the road, but also by raised crosswalks. And then trash pickups for buildings one and two will occur on this road as well, it is slower speed, so we didn't provide any pull offs. And they are smaller buildings. For all of the buildings, the trash will be stored internally, so it will, will only be taken out for pickup days. Let me make sure I got everything here. The last thing I want to call out is that in red, you can see that there is, the central plaza will be reinforced for emergency access, so that means a fire truck could pull in there or an ambulance. It will be able to hold up a vehicle, but it will not be a publicly accessible road. Moving into pedestrian circulation, so we're going to have sidewalks everywhere on the site, notably on the neighborhood road on both sides to both accommodate the various entry points to the building, but also all of the walkout units. So the rear, both sides of buildings one and two will have walkout units, as well as select locations in building three. And that sidewalk is going to continue across, and it connects to the existing bridge into one hundred Quantapowit. From there, sidewalks are coming down, and they are tying into not only our proposed public path along the lake, but the existing public path along the lake, so those are all connecting at the corners. Lastly, there is ample through-site options. You can connect on foot to the cafe patio and up to the neighborhood road through both the centers of building one and two, and then through the central plaza. So lastly, this is our mastering distribution diagram, and this is really relating to the points we were making in our design objective. So building three along route one twenty eight has been pushed back really as far as possible to mitigate traffic noise. This is the tallest building on the site, and then its mass is decreased as you move towards the lake. So this four-story edge that we're finding on the highway is deteriorating along the neighborhood road with the introduction of those three courtyards. Stepping down further towards the lake are buildings one and two, which are lower at three floors each, and they've also been segmented in half. So we've really tried to gently arc these buildings around the lake side of our property to maximize that public space and the area for rain gardens. So at the bottom here, you can see that at its closest, building one is one hundred and forty six feet to the water's edge. Building two is two hundred feet at its closest, and in the middle, they're expanding out to two hundred and twenty nine feet. The last notable decision we made when planning this is that the extent of the larger building, building three, are completely enclosed within the extent of buildings one and two, when you take the perspective from the lake. Now we're moving up to the roof plan, so just something important to note while we're looking at this, for the purpose of the presentation, we're showing it all at one level. The front two buildings would actually be one level below. But we wanted to use this to demonstrate how mechanical units are going to work. So we will be using rooftop mechanical units to keep the grade nice and open for the public. There, the units on buildings one and two are going to be pushed back towards the neighborhood road, and we did that to improve views from the public lake path, as well as our proposed lake path. And we have provided sections later on with, with sightline analysis and, and more information about sizing. And in the rear building, building three, the more traditional approach to rooftop units, we've centered them over the residential bars of the building. Other than that, on the roof, you're going to find a lot of the, the typical elements, stair hatch, elevator overrun, trash chute overrun. And we've actually been doing a lot of work on the roof plan recently, and that's because this is an all-electric building, which is a big accomplishment really for, for Wakefield. and it's atypical of a lot of these multifamily buildings we work on. So by going all-electric, we're eliminating our reliance on fossil fuels. So there's a slew of sustainable initiatives. On the site, we have the rain gardens that we previewed in the first introductory meeting, low-impact design strategies, we'll have dark sky lighting. We're going to put in a lot of tree cover, pet-friendly spaces. Moving down, we're going to use plants that are native to this area. They're going to be drought tolerant. They're going to be low maintenance indoor. We have low VOC paints and coatings, operable windows for passive cooling, as well as a non-smoking building. Energy, of course, the big thing is the all-electric, but we're also going to have, you know, this is new construction, so it's going to be tight window seals, tight duct seals. Everything, all of the units will be individually metered, so that will save on efficiency. The, you know, whole building doesn't have to be cooled if it's a week when twenty percent of the people are on vacation. Moving down to operations, we're going to provide bike storage. Within those bike storage rooms, we provide repair stations, really do what we can to support ridership. And then lastly, we're providing coworking spaces in all of the buildings to kind of make these buildings of the future. So without further ado, exterior design. Since these are a new type of architecture for Wakefield, we're not including precedent studies here, but we really want to use the precedent of nature and what can be found along the lake. So all of the materials selected for the buildings are intended to resemble a color you would find in the environment. And really, we didn't, we wanted to eliminate or not use any kind of unnatural accents or statements because it didn't feel right for this site. So I'll go through the buildings one by one. We've included samples of the elevation below to kind of show each material that we're trying to use. And between the two segments of each side of Building One, we want to create variety without really creating too much contrast. So there's going to be two tones of brown fiber cement lap siding. Those are going to be broken up with a brick, a lighter-toned brick, and then we'll be using two shades of panel, one's more of a taupe, one's a gray. And those could be fiber cement or metal. We're definitely still really flexible at this stage. Just for, as for the architecture of the front building, it's very vertical in nature, not only in the material transitions, but in how we're stacking the windows and the balconies. And where we could, balconies are stacked over the walkout units. So that not only, you know, provides weather protection and is very sensible, it also kind of creates a statement for those entries, and so you can identify them along the building. Lastly, the recess piece is where we're going to include coworking units. So at gray, you'll be able to walk under these offices, but above, there'll be a little bit more of a contemporary connection, larger-scale windows into what could be a private office. Building Two, we're using a similar form of architecture. We're still very vertical. We're stacking the balconies over the walkout units. But we wanted to kind of have this be the cool side of the lake. So Building One was very warm, and now Building Two is using cooler tones. We've pulled the panel out to the proud feature, and it's going to be a green panel, something a little bit more muted, but then an accent of something a little bit deeper and more saturated. And then in the beyond, we'll be using two different tones of fiber cement lap siding. One will be kind of a desaturated wood, and then one will go all the way to more of a white. And then we're really adding a pop here with this darker iron spot brick. And again, those are all kind of in proportions that you would see in a townhome community. Building Two will also include the recessed, more contemporary connector with the coworking spaces. Moving back to Building Three, you can see in the key plan, this is the rear building on the site. We did try to take a more contemporary approach to the architecture since this building is not as publicly facing. We wanted it, you know, to really make a statement with larger windows and a variety of both recessed and protruding building forms. So we're articulating the mass horizontally, mainly above the first floor and also between the third and fourth levels. Those are kind of the areas we've chosen to break up the building. But we haven't forgotten the vertical articulation as well. Since this building does have three legs extending out towards the neighborhood road, those are kind of going to be inherently very vertical in nature. We have vertical buildings in the front in Buildings One and Two, so we wanted to find a way to kind of marry all of that together. Looking at the materials palette, we're back on the warmer side here. We are using a sandstone, kind of a lighter tone of a brick at the base, and then we're extending upwards with what could be more of a corrugated metal oriented vertically. That's, you know, what's making it more contemporary. Again, a vertical fiber cement siding, that would be a wood look. And then a fiber cement panel, which would be a white or a pearl. So that is that. And now I'm going to take you through the rendering. The first two here, we've already seen before, but now that we've been introduced to the materials, I thought it was important to review them. So right now, we're standing at the site entry from the north outside. The path all the way to the right is existing, and it's connecting to our proposed path, kind of through the middle of this render. And we're looking at the cafe. We really wanted the cafe to be surrounded by a lot of brick here in this mass, and then kind of wrapping this form. We've pulled up a roof element to kind of make this a statement corner and let the rest of the building kind of transition into the rear of the site. And you can now kind of see the vertical articulation I mentioned with the balconies. Something Brian noted in his opening is that we've really done a lot of work with the, with Ian, our landscape architect, to make sure we're showing buildings and landscape that is accurate. So again, these rain gardens are going to be lush, higher, you know, density vegetation. It's not just the lawn. And the trees that we install on day one are going to be between fifteen and eighteen feet. So in the later sections, you'll see that they're really, they're almost two stories tall, and they're going to be significantly sized. And the species was chosen to kind of then continue to grow and create a canopy. And then on the right side of this, you know, those trees are all existing, and they will remain as well. So they're being represented here. Now we're moving into the central plaza. You're really getting a good look at these rain gardens and kind of how colorful they will be when it's summertime and everything is in bloom. On the left side of the screen, we have our warmer lakeside building, Building One, with that brown siding kind of tucking in to a covered balcony on the corner. That would be the entry to somebody's unit. So we're surrounding it with landscape and making it nice and lush and private. Building Two, all the way to the right, has that dark statement with the iron spot brick, but then is kind of transitioning and looks more welcoming into the central plaza with the brown tones and the green. And then looking backwards at Building Three, we have that nice, warm, welcoming sandstone brick at the amenity entry, and the building continues up from there. Moving into the site, so this is a new render for tonight. You're standing on the neighborhood road in this view, and you're looking down the neighborhood road, catching the building of the corner of Building Two, but really looking at these legs that are extending out from Building One. So I think this is the most telling where we can see these trees. This is not too far from where they will be on day one. And then the idea is that they would then grow to cover the road. So the road does have perpendicular parking, but it's broken up every eight or ten spaces or so for a landscape island so we can get enough tree cover back onto this site. Again, we're pulling into the primary courtyard just beyond the entry seen in this render, and here is one of these raised crosswalks that are going to be, you know, fairly wide and used as a traffic calming measure through the site. So now we're at the section. This section is cut. You can see below in the key plan, through Building One and kind of where it's tightest to Building Three. So this is going to be the narrowest section of road. Building One is three stories. You can see depicted all the way to the right, we have the existing trees. This red line is the property line. Beyond there is where we really start to see rain gardens, where our newest proposed path is going to be, which is kind of winding through the site plan. The more saturated version of the trees on the property is the day one, the install size, and the lighter hatch above is the intended full-growth size. So we've also included the mechanical units here. These are the standard sizes that they are going to be. And from the lake path, as you look up, you're not going to see those units in your visibility spoke. And as you move into the site and you're on our proposed path, your view is only going to improve because you will be closer to the building. This is another section that is more typical of what we'll find at each courtyard. So again, we're cutting through, it's actually Building Two. I have it mislabeled. And you can see the rain garden in front of it, the trees at install size and at full-growth size, the property line, and then the existing trees to remain. From the path, we're not going to be able to see the mechanical units. And I think that another thing this section does for us is it really shows us just how much space we're getting between the two buildings and how the quality of the inside of the site is really matching the quality of the land that we're putting back to the lake with this deep courtyard, which will include vegetation. And then lastly, Building Three with its mechanical units centered over the residential bar at four stories tall. So now we have some context views. I know that these are really important to the town, and for right now, these aren't, they're not professional renderings as you've seen before. We're really just trying to give you guys an idea. As I said, we're very flexible moving forward. We know this is going to be multiple meetings. So we started with one in the air, but we're very interested to know what views you are looking for in the context of greater Wakefield. So just aerially speaking, we're above the site. We can see the roof of One Hundred Quanapallett and the roof and surrounding parking of Jordan's Furniture beyond. And then I jump to this proposed view here. And I just really want to, I hope that this is, you know, showing you just how much green space that we are adding and that we are changing the, kind of the look and feel of this edge of the lake. While these are larger buildings than a single-family home, the ratio of building to, building to green space is definitely more imbalanced than we see existing on the site today and next to the site today. So this is another view, kind of hovering over Main Street. Looking towards the building, you can see the tower here. I hope you can see my mouse, but the tower is centered, and then the extension of the building beyond. So that's that portion, I think I said earlier, was about twenty-eight feet. Our front buildings are three floors. They're just shy of thirty-three feet. So while we do realize we're taller, we're hoping this view will help kind of explain why we think that that still works for this site. Another thing to note before we flip to the proposed is the view of One Hundred Quanapallett and the Jordan's Furniture in the background. So with this in mind, let's jump to the proposed. And so what you can see happened here is, yes, you know, our frontage was increased, but the top of our building, even our taller four-story building, is still completely below the tree line. So I think a lot of residents in Wakefield fear that this is going to be another Jordan's Furniture. It's going to be even another One Hundred Quanapallett. And it's really not. It's nestled into the site. It's fitting into the existing trees. A lot of the existing trees you're seeing in the front on the lake are to remain, so there will be no install and growth period. They're already there, and they won't be touched. So I'm going to just flip back and forth one more time here. Here's the existing view with the tower and the long run of office building. And here's our proposed view with all three buildings. So that's it for tonight. I hope that we were able to cover everything and definitely, you know, want to drive home that this is very flexible. We're looking for feedback. We want to know what you want to see. And please let me know if you have any questions.
Ally, could you please go back to page six on the PowerPoint? The one after the parking table, right there, if you could. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to go back to this because these are two points that the chair also asked to be addressed for compliance, and I wanted to hold off on these until you saw kind of the site layout. So this is pretty quick, but under 19032F, these are additional requirements. And one is, there shall be a paved driveway, a paved walk adequate to accommodate emergency vehicles within fifty feet of the outside entrance of each dwelling structure. We've met, as we've mentioned with the fire department, we certainly meet this requirement. We didn't delete number two. That's been deleted from our bylaw. I don't even know what it said. Number three here is really not applicable. It deals with individual attached dwellings. They says they may be sold as condominium units, only not row houses. So this would deal more with attached dwelling complexes, typical townhouse projects. That's the way an attached dwelling or attached dwelling development is defined in the definition section of our bylaw. So that wouldn't be applicable to us. If you could go down, Ally. Number five, under 19032F, no required parking areas for the multifamily or attached dwellings. Shall we, shall be placed in the required front yard area of a multifamily attached dwelling? And then it gives an exception for visitor parking. We're not looking for any exception. We certainly wouldn't anticipate that anybody wants us parking in the front of the building on the lake. And as you saw, there's no parking in our front yard whatsoever. Number six, you know, I want to point out, you know, we're touting the affordable units. These are required under our bylaw. So it's, you know, we're not, I want to acknowledge that. You know, our town bylaw requires this, that it says the intent of this subsection, Section Six, is to increase the supply of housing in Wakefield that is permanently available to and affordable by low and moderate-income households and to encourage greater diversity of housing accommodation to meet the needs of families and other Wakefield residents in developing and maintaining a satisfactory proportion of the town's housing stock as affordable dwelling units. To that end, the Special Permit Granting Authority, at the time of granting the special permit pursuant to Section 19032, shall require the applicant to provide affordable dwelling units equal in number to eighteen percent of the total number of dwelling units provided on the sites, which is the subject of the 19032 application. And then it mentions that they have to qualify for the housing inventory under 40B. So it's not a 40B project, but these affordable units will count towards our stock to our goal of attaining ten percent. So they'll count towards that 40B count when they're properly docketed with DHCD. What's interesting is this requirement was put in our zoning bylaw, I believe, back in 2004. It was initially twelve percent, and then it was amended and increased to eighteen percent, which is an extremely high number when compared to other communities. I believe, because I got a call from a planning board member in Stonyam last week asking me about this in our bylaw, that I believe the town of Stonyam, and I don't know if it passed, but I think for the first time, they were just talking at their town meeting about putting an inclusionary zoning requirement in. And kudos to the town of Wakefield because we've had this requirement in our bylaw going back to 2004. And there's been a lot of affordable housing units that we put on the rolls pursuant to this section. So I just wanted to finish that up, Mr. Chair, because that was, those were two sections that you would also ask me to address, and I just thought it'd be more appropriate to do it after Ally had shown the layout of the site.
Thank you. So with that, board members, any comments, questions on the information we've seen and heard tonight?
Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, Jim.
First of all, thank you for the presentation. I thought it was very thoughtful and thorough. When we talk about usage, a member of the Coalition for Accessibility and whatnot has reached out to me and said, are any of these units going to be accessible? Uh, not necessarily affordable, but accessible. And it certainly seems to me that in a, in a unit size of 485 units, we should think about that, or would Cabot, Cabinet and Forbes be willing to think about it? I know they must have data somewhere uh or housing data somewhere as to how many units uh should be, not just possibly accessible, but actually built as accessible units. Um, and I think it's something we should certainly look at as we think about affordability. We should also look at accessibility. Um, and so I thought it was a good point that a member of their commission brought up to me. And I'd love to hear what CCNF might think about that and how they would look at that.
The code, the code requires that any development basically have accessible units, also to have basically convertible units to accessible. I'll let them talk to that, but the code is already very, very clear. Access code is very, very clear as to what's required in any building project, quite frankly.
Right, but it, Jim, it's usually done as convertible. I'm talking about right off the bat.
No, it isn't.
Built, have them built.
No, there, it, I don't believe, unless the code's changed since I was involved, basically. There were some that had to be built outright that way. And then there was, then the code changed to allow also convertible units.
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know where it stands now, nor has it ever been presented when they talk about, you know, the different types of units they're presenting, that any of them are accessible.
Brian, anyone? Yep, go ahead.
If I may.
Um, question kind of is to Ellie. The architect in all of this.
I can, I can respond as well. Um, so my apologies for leaving that out of the presentation. We are going to be meeting all of the accessibility codes. So we will be both providing units that are accessible on day one, which is still a requirement, as well as um group two units, which can be adapted later. So that means they're kind of built with all the, the necessary blocking and things like that and clearances. So that if we needed to come in and, and change a cabinet or add a handrail to make it an accessible unit, um, we would be able to do that.
Do you know what?
Escaping me.
So 5% of the units will, will be built as accessible and 100% of the units will be built to accommodate um, to be able to be converted into an accessible apartment.
So 5% of 485 is 24 some odd units will be built as accessible as?
That's correct.
That's great. Thank you. Can we just add that to all your housing stock numbers? And I think that's a great number, by the way, and thank you for that. Is that by code or what you guys do because that's what's needed in housing?
That's what's required by code today.
On any project or just a project of this size?
Well.
I, I want to say it's all multifamily projects of scale.
Because I don't know that we've heard that number on other projects.
We haven't, we haven't.
Just talk about this project.
We haven't asked, but it is 5%. And it's also requires a mix. So you're a three-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-bedroom. Uh, you know, all of them basically have to have at least availability um to be accessible.
But Jim, Jim, can I ask CCNF? Because they're, they're the ones I really want to hear from, no offense. Um, and I want to just clarify what we just heard, which was that 24 some odd units will be built right off the bat as accessible with a chair, accessibility shower and all the right heights and front knobs on ranges and all that stuff.
That's exactly right.
Great, thank you. That's wonderful, by the way. Not that you, not only that you have to do it, but we'll be doing it.
Not to interrupt, Chip, but 24 some odd, if this is approved at the current number, which it very well may not be.
Five, five. About that, Greg. I was in favor of 600 units, so.
Shut your mouth, Chip.
Not everybody in Wakefield's against it.
So I, I have questions that back up even further than that uh that I think are probably for Brian. Um, and I, I can start with the, the letter that we got with the original set of, of plans said that uh, there was a, an agreement or at least an agreement of principle or something with the Friends of Lake Quanah Potter and Potter that was protecting approximately 12 acres of land on the site from future development. I'd, I'm interested to know what form of protection that would take. Like, are we thinking of, you know, deeding? Um, you know, the, I guess what, what are the wetlands now to the town? And how really that affects our thinking of what the density calculations actually are? Uh, I assume now the density calculations take into account, were used as a denominator, the um, the wetlands area. So taking that into account, if we're gonna, you know, in the future permanently protect it, the number, the density calculations really could be quite different than what, what was shown today.
Yeah, so I can, I can, Peter, did you want to take that? I saw you come off of mute and feel free to.
Um, yeah, Brian, let me, let me start to try to address Mr., Mr. Chairman through you um to Mr. McIntosh. And, and I think Brian will have additional details, but uh, we, we appreciate the question. And I, I think uh, for the record, Peter Tam, co-counsel uh for the applicant. The idea of effectively permanently restricting 12 acres or more on the site uh from any development in the future should be considered a net positive. So I, I just want to stop there for a second to, to just to, uh, and, and that includes undeveloped areas, wetlands, areas that are proximate to the lakefront. Uh, these are sensitive areas that deserve permanent protection and they're not currently protected. So that has been, that has been an important priority for the Friends of the Lake. And it's one that we're, we've been willing to, and Cabinet, Cabinet and Forbes has been willing uh to step up and agree to. That commitment is uh really uh a gentleman's agreement at this time. And we would uh seek to finalize that um both with uh the Friends, but also in the course of this process and with the Conservation Commission. With respect to density, those restrictions could take a number of different forms. And we can, at another session, show the board and the public specifically the areas that we're concentrating on and that have been prioritized by the Friends of the Lake uh that amount to those 12 plus acres. It could be, to answer Mr. McIntosh's question, that um a, a section which has been described as the woodlands, uh, which is the large undeveloped section that includes some pretty substantial wetland areas, could be deeded to the town. That is a voluntary exercise and it's not definite. Um, but how it might impact density is uh not an issue that is before the board at this time. We could certainly do this by a conservation restriction. So I don't think the, the idea of density, but I will say that we have considered um how the donation, the potential donation of that particular area might impact zoning compliance. And we've concluded preliminarily that it will have no impact on zoning compliances as Brian has outlined. So I, I, I just submit to the board that um these potential donations of land, whether it be by don't, by fee contribution uh to the town or by permanent conservation restriction. Um, we don't know that yet. Um, and, and, but in either instance, the net impact is going to be a positive one in that there'll be certainty for no development on those areas uh in perpetuity.
So I, I agree that it definitely would be a, you know, a, a huge positive impact. But I mean, if you've done the, the calculations that it would have no effect on zoning, I would like to see what, what those are, just to know what the difference is.
You know, this is, this is, I, I, Mr. Chairman, through you. Um, we can do that. Um, I don't think we're, we're, we're there yet. And we haven't made a decision as to whether we're going to donate that land in, in, in fee. And frankly, whether the town is, wants to accept that land. Um, so, so I, I don't want to put the cart before the horse. I, I submit that we, we absolutely want to show you, the members of the, of the board as well as the public, what specifically we intend to do to permanently protect that land. If the town chooses to um accept the donation of some of that land, not all of it, um, we can have that discussion.
So I get, I just, I, I understand. I, I, I want to back up. I think maybe my question is misunderstood. I don't really care at the end of the day what the form is. Um, I shouldn't say I don't care. Right now, I don't care what the form is. In your letter to us, you did say that you have agreed to permanently protect 12 acres of land on the site from future development. I want to understand, a, a, an understanding that, you know, that isn't before the board right now. I would like to have an understanding what the removal of 12 acres for future development does to a zoning calculation. And I think that's, that's reasonable to at least under, understood if maybe we don't make a decision based on that. And as you, you know, I think you heard other uh zoning board members maybe willing to move forward without it, but I think that would at least help us have an understanding on what the ultimate outcome of this land will be. I don't want to get into a situation where we say, hey, that's not before you now. Then later you, you know, essentially remove land from what this calculation would be now. And it, it essentially changes what was before. So I just want to have a full picture of the number of units being developed on the developable land.
Yeah, if I.
And it was, and it was you who represented to us that it will be protected.
If I could.
Let me, Brian, if I may, just, just to, to one point before you step in. The permanent protection of 12 acres has no bearing, none on zoning compliance. It just means we're restricting it. So the point that Ellie made early on, the increase in open space, that is a result of the changes to the site, the redevelopment. But the fact that these, these 12 acres are going to be permanently protected has no bearing. If there's no disposition or conveyance of land, there's no bearing on zoning compliance.
And so that's essentially, you're saying you're not willing to show us what the calculation would be?
Well, sure, but there's.
That's all I care about. That's all, then just, then just show it. That's all I care about. That's all I'm asking. If there's no change, just show it. I, I would just like to understand what the, with the wetlands or whatever that is removed, what the calculation would be. Because if you, if we're saying we can't develop that land, I would like to at least understand what the calculation is with just the developable, developable land. If you think I can't make a decision on that, great, but I think it informs the rest of the board. At least informs a decision. I, I, if you're not willing to provide it, that's fine, but I would like to understand.
The, um, Mr. Chairman, I, I'm, I'm puzzled because the land, whether it's restricted or not, by a conservation restriction, can still be, it's still part of the law, the law area. So, so there is no change in terms of zoning.
That's fine. You're not willing to provide it. That's fine.
I can, I can, let me add this because I think I can simplify it because we looked at this, this afternoon. If you took out all of, if you took all of the wetlands off of the site, so if there were no wetlands, if you got rid of, deleted all of our wetlands, the, the density that would be allowed with the uplands is, is 525 units, Greg.
Perfect. That's literally all I was asking for.
Yeah, so, you know, I think there's plenty of room to move here. Um, you know, as Peter alluded to. The, the other thing I want to touch on, on that is because a comment was made at the last meeting, well, like the woodlands is all wet. So you really, the town's really getting nothing on that. And, and that's not true because it, it isn't all wet, but the, the important part of this is that a lot of those wetlands are about 128. And they're abused. They are abused. Uh, the Friends of the Lake have had, have had opportunities to get in there to their credit and clean them. You know, we, we've had great conversations with them, that, you know, they, they take the effort and they have cleanup days. And they're like, you know, we kind of sneak in and, and get the stuff. Uh, because a lot of stuff can tend to get dumped there and it's not good for the wetlands. And, and this project, um, you know, with the restrictions and the agreements in the maintenance and operation and maintenance, you know, the value of, of land that's wetlands, it's valuable because it's wetlands. It needs to be maintained and kept clean. It's adjacent to our lake. So the fact that this project allows that, instead of just letting it lie there or be neglected over, over the years, it's going to be maintained. So there is value to that land, whether it's restricted, donated. Uh, in any event, there's going to be a maintenance program that's going to maintain it. So. Thanks, Brian. Anyone else?
I'll go.
Thanks, Amy. Go.
Um, so I caught up on the video recording from the last meeting since I wasn't here. Um, I still can't get over the, the numbers. I know that in Ellie, you did a really great job. The building is beautiful, the buildings. Um, I, I think it's a really, really thought out and thorough job that you did. Um, I just, it doesn't, in my opinion, it doesn't belong in Wakefield. The unit count is just for myself, it's too high. The traffic is, it, it, it's out of control right now. And I know we keep saying, you know, oh, people are going to commute and they're going to do this. I, I mean, not commute, I'm sorry, to take the train or ride bikes or do whatever else they're going to do. I've yet to see that. We're still in the middle of a pandemic and the traffic in the past couple of months has gotten so bad in this town. I can't imagine what's going to happen when people start going to work and we add all these cars into there. Um, the impact that that's going to have on our schools, I worry about. Um, section 190 dash 32 F6 that we just talked about on that page. Um, one of the things says it's um for the 18% for the affordable housing, says that it um accommodates the need, accommodate, accommodating to meet the needs of families. So that tells me that that's something that is looked at, that this is, they want to accommodate families. So if we're having families coming in, we need to accommodate them. And how do we do that in our schools that are already overflowing? Um, I just, again, I think it's a very thought out job that is done. And if, if this was somewhere else, I think it would be beautiful. It just, it, it, it's not the spot for it. Um, one thing that stood out um back probably a year ago now, when they did the pre-application, I believe that they took the layout of the land from 200, 400 Quanah Palate and overlaid it over the downtown area, saying it was the same size. And when you did the shot where we were kind of inside the, the layout of where the buildings were, it's huge. It looks like uh Wellington Station to me. And I think it's probably, it might not be as tall as Wellington Station, but the layout of it is, is that big. I just, I can't get past the impact that this is going to have on the town. Um, so just want to put that out there.
Thanks, Amy. Anyone else?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, yes, Tom.
Yeah, I kind of want to add in on that, the scale of it. Can you uh estimate how many people are going to live at this location under the proposal as it exists? Anybody?
You're asking total people, so 485 units.
That you expect.
Number of bedrooms.
485 units. It looks, you know, by very quick addition, it looks to be about 670 bedrooms. How many people would you expect to live in this complex?
Don't have that number offhand. Um, I, Thomas, uh, I would be happy to follow up with that number.
Yeah, I'm sure there's an industry standard or something that you could, you could look up.
Um, as, as you know, I'm sorry, as you know, we're going to be submitting a, an economic impact report. And I think that that will be, you know, kind of addressed there, the, the, the total impacts. So, I mean, it's obvious that, you know, any project uh of this nature has impacts and benefits. There's benefits too, there's financial benefits. So, you know, I would ask, and I think the board will, you know, you know, before you determine if something is, you know, too big or doesn't work or you've got to look at all of the evidence that's going to be submitted as part of this hearing and review it. And, and I think, um, you know, we'll be submitting that economic impact report within the next week.
I appreciate that, Brian. There are some very thoughtful elements to this proposal. Uh, but I want to probe on things I'm concerned about. So uh, that's what we do. You know, we don't generally just say this is great. Um, but you know, off the top of my head, I'll leave that point a minute, but. Um, but you know, off the top of my head, I'll leave that point a minute, but it could be upwards of 1,01200 people. Living there. You, you're talking about adding, you know, possibly four or five percent. To the, our population, which is about 27,000 people. So that's a significant, uh, factor for me in terms of looking at the scale of the project, in terms of looking. At whether it meets the, the criteria that we're going to look at. I agree with the line of questioning that Greg was going down. If we're, if we're going to put four or five, add four or five percent pounds population. You know, it's, I think you said it's a 23 acre site. You're going to preserve 12 acres. So you're talking about. Putting that amount of people on about, uh, 11 acres of land at the head of the lake. And the impacts on traffic and, and other things there. Couple of other things too. You, you mentioned that it's all electrical. It's fine. Is it? True that the gas department's not going to allow gas in these type of multifamily buildings anyway?
Yeah, that's true, Tom.
Okay. So I, I appreciate the fact that you, you, you talked about. That, um, the affordable housing is required too. So. Let's try not to take credit for doing an electric building when the gas isn't going to be allowed in there anyway. So. If you could be a little bit more upfront about that, I'd appreciate it. Then I had some questions also about the trees. So Dave, I'll leave that up to you. Um, some of the questions I had were, there's removal of a significant. Uh, like 18 trees that are really significant, you know, some of which are over 30 inches in caliber. And some of those relate to where the building footprints are. I can wait till we do landscape or if you want to talk about that now, I'll leave that up to you.
I would defer to the more detailed landscape and just stick to more of the. The stuff we heard tonight. So I would, I would ask you to table that one just so. We gotta, we gotta probably try to wrap this one up soon. We've got a lot of other business tonight. So. But, you know, we still get open up to public. I've got a couple of, um, pieces of correspondence that I want to just. Address quickly too, before we.
Okay, that's it then. I do appreciate the job the architect did on the proposal. I think. That there, like I said, there's a lot of good elements. I just think the scale is too big for the project.
Right, thanks, Tom. Anyone else?
Oh, go ahead, Joe. You can go.
Oh, sorry. Um, yeah, two quick, uh, comments. Uh, Ellie, any, uh, thought on fitness centers for these? Uh, I know you've said there's a couple areas of amenities, but. Does that include fitness centers for all these people or? You guys thought of that?
Um, yes. So there will be a fitness center. It will likely be, um, one fitness center. In the primary many space in building three. So, um, we haven't provided a space large enough in the front two buildings, but all residents will have access to, to a gym in building three.
All right, uh, great. One other comment. Uh, I know you guys are putting the coffee area there. Are you thinking about any other restaurants or something? In that nature, or are you just going to stick with the one coffee area? You love that.
Uh, right now.
Go ahead, Ellie. I apologize.
As I say, right now, we're only, um, providing the cafe, um, in the southern corner of building one. Uh, we did at one point explore different retail options. Uh, it, it seemed as though that wasn't. The competition wasn't desirable with the, the locations in downtown Wakefield. Um, so for right now, it's just the cafe.
Yeah. That's it, Mr. Joe.
Okay, thanks, Joe. Anyone else?
I had another thing to jump in on too. Um, one, well, one was about a restaurant because I think originally that's kind of what we were in the pre-app anyway, that was what was discussed. So the. Cafe doesn't. For me, that doesn't do anything, but whatever. Um, the other thing about tonight's stuff is. When you showed the mechanicals on the top of the roof. It, I'm wondering about building three. I, I think that's the one that's in the back. Are they going to be overlooking now? The mechanicals on the top of buildings one and two?
Um, yes. So residents in the fourth floor of building three will be able to see the units on top of the front two buildings.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chair, if I could, when, um, Brian said the economic development, and this may be for future meetings, certainly. But one of the things I'd love to see is, I know we're going to talk about traffic. We're going to talk about economic development. Uh, and the economy is a scale for all of this. I think those are very important things to get out front as early as possible. So I would be in favor of. Making sure that those are some of the next topics as much as we can because. Like everybody says, if it doesn't make sense economically, then the numbers don't make sense. Architecture doesn't make sense. So. Um, I'd like to get both, you know, we, it's, it's. And I, no offense to. My cohorts on the, I love hearing that traffic's going to be horrible. I've heard that in every certain. Complex that we're at, yet we haven't had a traffic study yet. And, you know, I just want to deal with facts. So I think the economic development will really help that. As well as traffic.
So Brian, you think you'll have that report to this board? In. Yeah, we've submitted a traffic study to your board. Um, so that's, that's, that was submitted, but it hasn't been heard by TAC. So.
Right.
Yeah. And I don't think you're going to have anything back from TAC in two weeks on that, on traffic. Um, and I think we, we should be able to get our economic, uh, report to you. Matt, probably next week, you think we'll be able to submit that report?
I think that makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. So we, we should be able to have that to you next week.
Uh, and, and Brian and Mr. Chair, who do you think from the town is the right one to? Look at that and verify. You know, as we do with traffic. Yep, that's what they say and it makes sense.
Well, as you said, Mr. Todd Bell, it's, it's based on facts. So our economic development person who prepares that report, actually, he interviews. Town officials to get the data that he uses. So he talks to the assessors department. He talks to the school department. Um, as far as school impacts, he talks to police, fire, et cetera, to get the numbers that they see in these types of things. So. So, you know, as far as, um, like a, a review, I, I, I don't know who would have that for you. I, I think that's.
Would it be Mr. Mayo?
I, I don't.
Probably to start with him. We can talk about that later.
Yeah, I think, I think we need to see it. It's been a while since I've personally seen one, you know, before our board for other projects. So. I mean, it's going to be, you know, our goal, you know, you're talking about the population, you know, our goal, one of the, one of the benefits of this project that we're going to get into with. Is the, is the connectivity of it to the downtown businesses. Um, and, you know, how we're going to try to promote that. And that's part of it. So at some point, you know, you might want to hear from your economic development person, person that we now have in the town.
Yeah.
Um, as far as how this potentially could, you know, the big goal has been for how long, you know, let's improve the downtown businesses, the restaurants and. And, you know, this is an opportunity to create connectivity to them. Uh, and that's what, what, you know, Mr. Doherty has been talking about from day one with this project. Uh, we don't want this to say, hey, you, you live in your own world here. Um, and, you know, and that's why, you know, we are proposing, I think it's going to be more than a cafe. We'll have some restaurant elements. But, you know, we don't want to isolate these people. We want to bring them into the community and bring them into the downtown businesses to contribute. So I think that's going to, so I think, you know, potentially, you know. Uh, you, you, it'd be interesting to see the, you know, the thoughts of the.
No, I don't know. I brought my.
Activity development. Okay. Any other final comments, board members at this time? Move things along if not. So some correspondence we've received since the last hearing. Um, we did receive a letter from the, the planning board courtesy of, um, Bill Spalding. Um. On April 26th, I just don't remember if we actually mentioned it or, uh, for the record at the last hearing. Uh, because it was more of an introductory meeting. Um, Brian, have you seen this correspondence from the planning board? I have not, and I don't think it was referenced. Okay, I didn't think so. So it is letter again, in the interest of time, um, it, it does raise, uh, some recommendations, a few concerns. Um, you know, again, I, I, um, it's in the record. Um, I would, I would just perhaps get a copy from, from, um. The building department and just review with the team. Um, some things that may, we might want to consider on other board members. I think, um, Gail, was it sent to all board members? If not, we'll certainly do that.
I believe it was, but if not, I will tomorrow.
Okay, so just double check team if, if you, uh, did not see this note from the. Planning board, I think there's some interesting points in there that we should consider. Um, one thing I'm going to share quickly, I think I can share quickly. It was raised after last meeting, soon after last meeting, we started talking about getting a, a website. Together and, and there was something under construction. And that site now exists. So there was an inquiry from, um, Bronwyn Delavobi about, about that site. I think she noticed when it was under construction. So that site, for everyone's awareness, now exists. If you go to the town Wakefield site under. Zoning Board of Appeals page. You will see now this, um, sorry, we're about hovering, um, this 200 corner power. Page and all the plans. And all the different aspects, the team, we're going to try to keep this, well, we will keep it up to date. Uh, so folks want to refer back to, um, what's been discussed, the plans, and of course, the meetings are all reported anyway, but this will provide a link. As well as the meeting minutes that get posted on our site. So. Folks that are curious about the project and how it, um, may evolve over the coming, uh, weeks and months, um, can go here. I just wanted to point that out to folks. Um, because that question was raised. From, uh, Christine Carrato on May 5th. Um, you know, again, shared some concerns about the development. The site was wondering about, um, thought it might have been rezoned was part of that. So I clarified that. Um, but again, that, her note is now in our record. There was also a note from Julie Scott on May 7th that was sent. I know this was sent to all board members. It was also in the Wakefield item. So folks may have seen that in the paper, but that too. Was received from, um, since the last hearing, and I just want to point that out. That too is in our record. As well as a, another memo here today that was sent apparently to the board and the planning board. Leo Shaheren, I'm sorry if I'm mispronouncing that name. Again, over a page and a half here of, of concerns, I would just, um, Gail, if we can, you know, either self will. I think it went to our, our main account. We'll get this forwarded to all the board members for, for again, uh, our consideration, just some, um. Additional important concerns. For us to consider. So just wanted to call that out, correspondence since our last hearing. So with that. Once again, we'll open up the public testimony. If you have a comment or question, please raise your hand. I see a few hands going up. And we'll try to. Entertain what we can again, um, given what we've heard tonight. Uh, firsthand, I saw go up Jackie McKinnon. Please state your name and address for the record, Ms. McKinnon.
Hi, thank you so much. Uh, my name is Jackie McKinnon. I live at 15 Pine Hill Circle. Um, so thank you for the presentation. It was definitely thoughtful and detailed. I do have some. Serious concerns with, um, with the traffic. So I, I agree with everything Amy said essentially. Um, I, I don't know that. A traffic study is going to change my mind. Um, you know, although the, the site. Um, has been developed with, you know, we talked a lot about architecture, um. Different materials and things like that, but we didn't really focus on the impact of the town. Um, you know, I live here. I've lived here for quite a while. I actually graduated from Wakefield High. Um, the traffic has just been. Uh, really insane over the past several years with all the development that's happening in the town. I can tell you it takes me, and granted, this is a school drop off time, but it takes me a half hour to get to the school to drop my kids off at home. And if you know how close I live to the middle school, that's pretty insane. Um, you know, I, I've heard a lot of stuff about having bike lanes and people taking their bike to, to do different things downtown. Um, I don't see that as realistic personally. I, I would never get in a bike. I mean, most of the year, the weather here is not good enough for that anyway. I would never get in a bike to go do my errands. Um. You know, I like to exercise, but that's not something I'm going to do to go do errands. So I don't know, you know, how much of, of that I actually think is going to sort of support that argument. Um, again, I think, you know, the impact of the town, I don't think, you know, the lake in my mind, um, I, I know a lot of people in town agree with me on this. I have a lot of friends that are. Too busy to kind of try to get to all these meetings, but, um, a lot of people I know are very displeased with the thought of putting. Three buildings, um, with that many units on the lake. It's, it's kind of like the, the last part of Wakefield that's been not developed too much. Um, you know, I, I think it just. You know, I don't think it's appropriate for that spot. I think it's too many units. Um, and again, I don't think a traffic study is going to change anybody's mind. If you live here, um, you can understand the pain. I, I come out of. My street, I go down Elm to go onto Prospect. I, I can't, I just sit there. I can't even get out. I mean. I can't go down North Ave like, you know, most of the day. Um, so I, I just, I don't see how this is gonna. Um, not be very detrimental to the town. Um, you know, I, I appreciate the fact that the, the site can technically hold 800 units and they're proposing 485. Um, but that's still a lot for the town considering, you know, the issues that we have with traffic and how that's going to impact the schools. Um. You know, again, I think a lot of time has been focused on the design of the building, which I appreciate. Um, and, you know, adding the green areas, but I don't think enough. Time has been spent talking about the other impacts to the town, the environmental impact on the lake. The parking, the schools, um, and all of that stuff. I just think we're getting to a point where we can't keep. Adding without thought to that.
Well, we'll certainly get to some of this in future meetings, of course, but, uh, thank you for the initial.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Joe.
Can you just run through the rules of what we're doing tonight or we'll be here forever? We always have been very specific to say that public comments, I get everybody's concerned about the size of it, but there's time. To discuss those when we have different information in front of us. If we go astray tonight and just talk about how big it is, we're going to be here all night. Architecture, stay on architecture or don't let people speak, one or the other. Please.
Okay. So I will remind everyone, yeah, again, if, if you're new to some of these meetings. We try to tailor or. Um, acknowledge public testimony relative to the specific topic. So we'll get into traffic. People can comment on traffic in a future meeting, landscaping, all the rest of it. Tonight, we heard more about the site in a, in, in, in the architecture. So if you have comments specific to that. Um, we'd ask you to, to direct your comments toward that, uh, and reserve other comments for a few. When we get into some of the, so to, to Mr. Kirk. Um, so with that, Bronwyn Delavobi.
Uh, good evening. Thank you for the, um, uh, presentation. It was greatly detailed. Um, first of all, I have to strongly object that we not. Speak to the elephant in the room, which is the size of this project. That's going to be, uh, number one, um. Throughout, whether it's you're talking about architecture or not. Um, I, I, I'm actually, um. Actually incredulous that, that they can tell us the number of atoms in each brick going on the building, but that they can't tell us the number of people anticipated to live there. Uh, I'm having a hard time with that. Um, a, a, and, and you know, I think we have to say, you know, don't buy this improving the downtown business stuff because we've heard it before. And no project that we've heard this on has, has rejuvenated our downtown yet. So we're, we're not buying into that. I frankly feel that the building is unattractive. It looks gulaggy. It's blocky. It's, uh, unattractive. It's not suited to the area. No, no, no offense meant to, to the architects, but there's very little. Uh, uh, a charm to this, this building. Uh, the renderings, literally my mouth fell open. I mean. Someone said it's going to need its own zip code and I have to agree. This is a city. Within a city. It is not suited to our lake. It's not suited to our suburban town. And I urge you very, very strongly to deny a special permit. Simply because it is too big and not suited, um, to our lake. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next stand I see Matt. Uh, Ty Hack.
Yeah, Ty Hatch. Thank you. I just, yeah, just a very quick comment.
Name and address, sir, for the record.
I'm sorry, Matt Ty Hatch to Stony Hill Lane. Uh, so this is a, a very special property for the town, top of the lake. Um, I would encourage everyone involved to be selective in how we develop it. Uh, one thing I didn't hear today, I'd like to hear more about. Is, uh, the relationship with the lake. We talked about donation of wetlands to the town. Uh, that's nice. Uh, but I would love if this property, uh, partnered with the town for how to actually turn our lake into something, uh, swimable. Uh, you know, it hasn't been swimmable for years. I would love that to be included in the thought process. Uh, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Chris Groome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Christopher Crum from 114 Main Street. Um, just a couple of quick comments. I, I, you know, I mirror Amy's comments from earlier today regarding the size, uh, and, and whether or not this is the right locus. Uh, focusing on exterior design elements in particular. Um, one issue that wasn't discussed tonight is exterior lighting. I'm not sure if that's, uh, something that will be discussed at a later meeting or not.
Future meeting.
The renderings that were shown, um, it showed each unit with a substantially sized light, uh, and exterior light for each particular unit. With 485 units, we can do the math on how many lights that is, um, uh, emanating from this property. Um, so I'd like to hear some discussion on that.
We will in a future meeting.
Okay, thank you. Uh, in terms of the height that was discussed, of course, it was discussed in terms of the height of the building, but not the mechanical units in the elevator shafts. Which of course extend much beyond the, the already 45 feet. which of course extend much beyond the, the already 45 feet, uh, height proposal. Just a point to consider. And then, um, I guess last point, you know, with respect to the upcoming economic development reports and the traffic studies. I think the, the board should consider, uh, requiring CCNF to hire a consultant, uh, on behalf of the town. Uh, I know this has been done in other projects. Uh, I can tell you as an attorney, uh, that hires experts in his cases, experts will say whatever you pay them to say. Okay. And that's not intended as a slight to them, but that's just their job. Um, and the town should have an advocate and someone who is qualified to review a traffic study, qualified to review an economic impact study. Uh, and do that analysis on behalf of the town so that we can have a, um, an educated discussion on these topics. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, we do for traffic. So for sure, we already have peer review with our own committee and, um, you heard that we would look into maybe something with the economic report once we see it. So. I think we're, we're hearing that comment that we feel the same way. So thank you for your, uh, comments. Anyone else for tonight? Okay. Seeing no hands, we'll close with the public testimony. If we could, before I forget, um, Ally or Brian, can we just also get a copy of tonight's presentation so we can get that on the website?
And if, if I could just say, Mr. Chairman, just based on those comments, we're, we are very excited to get into the environmental impact on the lake. That's the bread and butter of this project. And, um, so that was mentioned by a couple of folks and we're excited to get into the partnership on the lake and the water quality. And we have some incredible information that we'll provide at later hearings on that.
Thank you. Okay. Um, I just saw another hand go up, but I just closed it to public testimony. So, um, I'm going to ask you, we've reserved that comment the next time, sir, if you wouldn't mind.
Mr. Chairman, is Brian suggesting that he's ready to go on the topic of what they're proposing to do for the quality of the lake? Cause we keep hearing about how it's wrong for this project to be at the lake.
Well, if you can bring up, uh, Alec, you bring up the topic screen on the PowerPoint.
And, and by the way, the, the conservation commission is going to have a lot to say about that also, because, uh, we'll be before then we talk to you about that on the, um, on the, um, at the last meeting. So what we'd like to, what we'd like to deal with on the, in the next meeting is the landscape design, cause that kind of goes hand in hand with, with Ally and also with the rain gods really gets in to, um, to the, um, to, you know, how, how the project works. And I think also, um, it might be appropriate that we bring our, um, environmental consultant, uh, to talk about some of the benefits to the lake. Because I don't.
Are you ready to do two and six?
Well, conservation areas and public accessibility, that's a little bit, that's, that's a little bit different, but you want to talk about the environmental benefits to the lake that can be provided. And, you know, we can do that, I think, with, with landscaping and design. I think we could, we could, we could maybe deal with that at the next meeting.
Do we want to do that ahead of economic?
I don't think you'll be ready for economic. Um, you know, that's up to you because, you know, you're going to get that report next week and then you, you know, you, you probably only going to have a week to look at it. We can present, we could do economic and present that, uh, you know, it's really up your.
Yeah, we, I think we got to see it and see whether we, we think we can.
I mean, I would.
Go there at the next meeting or we want to get some other input.
Yeah, I, I, I would really like to deal, you know, our preference would be to deal with landscape and design. It goes with architect, architecture and start talking, uh, with our expert about the, the benefits of the, uh, of the environmental aspects of this project, uh, compared to what's there today. It was mentioned that, you know, that, that, uh, you know, the property is not developed. The property is developed. The property is in not good condition and not environmentally good condition. That's a big part of this project and the benefit of it. So we would like to get into that, um, at the next meeting a, as far as that with our landscape design.
Mr. Chairman, if, if I may, um, just to add to Brian, the, I can appreciate that the fiscal impacts are, um, of key importance to the board and to the public, just as the environmental conditions are. If, if as planned, we submit the fiscal impact report to you next week, you'll have the opportunity to review it amongst yourselves. And we might suggest that our fiscal impact consultant uh, at a subsequent session, review that with you, answer your questions and you can determine at that stage who and, and whether you, you need further review.
Okay. I, yeah, board members, we want enough time to, to digest what this, uh, report says and, and what, what else we want to do with it. So does this? So I guess to proceed.
I would ask then, uh, uh, on if we're, when we are talking about landscape design, we just can be talking like conceptual. And on some projects we we then, you know, get boiled down into the minute details, but if, you know, the project changes, the overall concept is going to change. It doesn't make sense to talk about minute details of landscaping that.
But I, I don't think that, I think that, that the details on landscaping also go to the benefit of the environment. Which, you know, to me, you know, alls we hear about is, you know, the influence of the lake and, and this is, this is a big part of this. So I think, you know, we'd like to really present that.
The, Mr. Chairman, the, and to address Mr. McIntosh's concern, I think that the idea of addressing landscape and, and environmental impact really are one in the same. The one item that we might need to advance is, uh, because stormwater is such a key. Such a key piece of this, uh, we may need to at least talk about the stormwater management that's going to be implemented, uh, but reserve some of the details there to a subsequent session with the civil engineer.
That's a good point.
Okay. Sound reasonable, board members, in terms of next meeting?
To me.
All right, let's plan on that. Till the 26th.
I move that we continue this to the 26th.
Any discussion? On favor, uh, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Hi.
Jim? Where are you, Jim?
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Um, Joe?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. Thank you for the information tonight. And again, informative and we will see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, Brian, we ready to go right into the next one? All right, is Chris Mulhern? Does he? Yep, Chris showed up. I just saw him. All right, our next continued hearing, 21 dash 40, 41 and 42, 62 Foundry LLC at 62 Foundry Street and 76 Foundry Street.
Great. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, Brian McGreal here with Chris Mulhern. On behalf of the applicant 62 Foundry LLC. Uh, I'm going to, we submitted some information just for a time efficiency. I'm going to hand it over to Chris because Chris is working on some, um, finite details with the board. On, you know, trash locations and other aspects of the design that, uh, he wants to talk to you about. I don't think we're going to be very long. I can tell you that, um, we, we have submitted everything to the TAC. I, I expect the TAC will hopefully have correspondence back to your board for your meeting in June. I don't think that will happen for your next meeting on the 26th. So just so you can, you can kind of plan where you want to go with this after tonight. And with that said, I'm going to hand it over to, uh, Chris.
Yeah, I think the TAC is planning to meet the 21st and cover a few different projects actually. So we may not get their feedback in time for the 26th to your point.
Yeah, you won't.
For other members. Yeah. Okay. All right.
Thanks, Brian. Uh, Chris Mulhern for Harrison Mulhern Architects on behalf of 62 Foundry LLC. I have a very short presentation tonight, just two topics. This is the project. It's 58 units, 10 affordable support space for the residential mixed use space of 3,000 square feet. Scheduled to be a restaurant and parking for 92 cars. The two open design issues last time were these. The location of the trash and recycling and the final finished material selections for the exterior. Starting with the trash and recycling, uh, we reviewed four alternative locations. Option one is down here. It's what's on the plan set that you have. It's partially under the building at Foundry Street on the south end of the site. Option two is up here in the southeast corner. Takes two parking spaces and a portion of the landscape area for a trash enclosure. Option three is in the northeast corner of the site up here adjacent to the transformer. And then finally, option four is back in the southeast and the opposite side of this corner from option two. Upon review, the consensus of the ownership group and the design team was that option two and option four, these guys up here in the corner were really too far from the building core. And that of the four choices that we looked at, uh, one and three, uh, were the strongest. So we focused on those. So starting with option one, it's tucked here in the corner of the building. It, we're proposing a masonry enclosure on two sides, uh, and then a board fence enclosure on the other two sides. The concern that was raised was about, about this location was that the units above and the building next door would be negatively impacted by the rollout dumpsters when seen from above. This concern could be partially mitigated by a pergola up on top. A solid roof is also a possibility. Building next door, 128 plumbing is shown here. There are two windows here on the ground floor and then a fire escape connecting up to the second floor. There are no windows on the second floor of, of this building. The existing building at 76 Foundry Street is what this left-hand edge is here. That's right on the property line. So this is the proposed masonry enclosure shown here at the bottom of the slide. That would be a significant improvement over the existing condition for the neighbor. Option three is in the northeast corner of the site. It would replace two parking spaces with a concrete pad and a fenced enclosure for the dumpsters. The pad would have a six foot high cedar board fence all the way around with swing gates across the front. A single gate in the center for pedestrians and then the wide double gates on either side for moving the containers in and out. The gates would be protected by a line of, uh, of bollards at the face edge of the pad. We looked at extending this fence enclosure to, uh, capture the transformer as well. But we were told by our site engineer that the electrical utility will not allow that. The complication of option three is that the space given back at the Foundry Street corner down here is not deep enough to fit parking. This is a result of the offset in the property line, which you can see here that, uh, jogs where the property line jogs around the fire, fire escape from the next building down the street. So what this plan is proposing is three motorcycle spaces head in and then a pad with bike rack for bicycle parking, locking bicycle parking. If this result is acceptable to the board, um, then we're fine with option three. We also think option one is, is viable, particularly with a pergola on top. This solution results in the shortest walk for the residents and, uh, minimal visual impact. Moving to the exterior materials, uh, we have a couple of minor changes that we want to propose to the exterior colors. This is the proposed Walton, uh, Walton Field elevation. We want to make one adjustment in the colors of these courtyard tower elements. Last time we proposed the, using two grays and a blue for the, the smooth panels in these towers. When we got the physical sample of this blue color, we really didn't like it. So what we want to do is we want to substitute a dark gray for the, for the dark stripes on this tower. So this would be the palette, be these three different colors of gray, three different shades, I should say, of gray with very little change in the overall effect. You should have gotten this booklet of proposed exterior materials in your packet. And we want to just clarify one point here. At the time we prepared the booklet, which was last week, uh, we had not yet received the physical samples of the fiber cement panels for the yellow portion of the main body of the building. This is meant to be a custom color. Of the eight samples that we got, uh, the one we selected was a color, a Benjamin Moore color called Macadamia nut. That's, this is Macadamia nut right here. And so this is the board of the actual physical samples. Uh, this is a photograph, not a great photograph, but a photograph of the board, uh, that we delivered to Gail Conroy, uh, yesterday. So this is the actual pieces of the various elements that are listed in the booklet. Uh, and we think that we've got, uh, a pretty well-integrated and interesting palette for the project. And that is all I have for tonight. I'm happy to take any questions and I welcome your feedback about, uh, the best option for the trash.
Thank you, Chris. Board members? I'm sure there are opinions.
I was going to defer to Chip because I feel like that's usually his area, but, uh.
Having opinions?
Oh yeah, just in general, having opinions.
I think the trash area is too big.
See, there's an opinion.
Okay. We'll get rid of it altogether.
Well, I don't like losing parking, so.
No, I don't either, honestly.
Oh, I'm, I brought it up just because I thought to the front of the unit. But, you know, they've given it a lot of thought and it's their project. And if they want in the front right-hand corner and they think they can protect it and not have it have friends from the track coming over and be a nuisance, then so be it.
Okay, I'm totally fine with option one.
I concur. I, I, I hate those parking and I was thinking, are they going to be able to do something with parking in there and, you know, bike racks nice, but yeah, I just, I hate to lose parking. So given the two options, I, I would stick with one.
So did you say too, though, because I think Chip brought it up last time, uh, being far from the restaurant, like, well, the restaurant will be required in, I don't know what the building O and M or something. I don't know how to take away their own trash.
Yeah. So the, um, I don't think I have it on my, on this machine, but the, the restaurant plan has a trash room inside. So the restaurant operator is going to have to deal with their rubbish. They have to store it inside their, their space and they have to get it all at whatever frequency it takes to make sure that that works.
We don't want that in our dumpster, Greg.
No, understood, but you, you know, have no restaurants once, you know, starts overflowing.
The problem I, I have with that, Greg, is, is, as you know, every restaurant has now, right, 55 gallon drums of grease out back. It now has compostable stuff put somewhere. I think it's a burden on the O and M to, or whoever they're going to lease the restaurant to. But.
I, I don't care if it's a burden. I'd rather.
I'd rather have a restaurant there than if somebody saying, ah, we can't do trash. You know, that's my concern. That's my concern.
I agree.
Greg, do you want, I, I just want to make sure I understand what you want.
So no, I guess it was more of a question than really what I want. How, how do we, and, and I think, I think it was, there was a couple of people talking at once. I think it was you, Brian, who said, you know, it's something you would put in the O and M, basically a way to make sure that the restaurant isn't, you know, just leaving their stuff on the side street there.
Yeah, I was anticipating that would be in the O and M, that just what you're saying, that, you know, that there's, there's guidelines under the special permit that if they start doing that, the town has a hammer that they can come back and say, this is your O and M, you're not doing it, do it.
Well, the, the, uh, the restaurant space is going to be a leased space anyway, and my, is my expectation. So that, uh, there will be a condition of the lease that has to be met, that'll line out with the O and M manual will line up with, with every condition.
That's right. Yeah. So I figured that I thought about the lease and my mind went to a condition that the lease says that, but I don't know if we want to add that condition. It's just something we can own it. So no, I'm fine.
Anyone else? It sounds like we settled on trash unless there's another thought and materials. Anyone else? It sounds like we settled on trash unless there's another thought and materials. Yeah, I wasn't a hundred percent sure on the blue. I just, there was a lot of change and I liked the whole improvement of that facade and that whole area. I wasn't quite, I had to get my head around the blue, that was just going to be too much, too many different colors going on, so I think I'm probably more inclined with the shades of gray in that respect, but so I'm fine there. And I didn't have a chance to go down the town, down to the building department, but I will, just to see the rest of materials. But I appreciate you delivering them, Chris. We just, busy time, didn't quite get there yet before this. Yeah. Other board members?
This looks fine. We, if you go back, a bunch of meetings back, this elevation was dead. So whatever they've done here basically has aligned it quite a bit from what happens on the front. So the changes that has been, that Chris has recommended, I don't see, have muted or even pulled us back to where we were way back in the beginning. So this, I'm fine with this.
Anyone else?
Yep, I have a question. Chris, can you show me where that Macadamia Nut paint is going to be?
Yeah. So it's here, it's the, these elements of the main body of the building, one, two, three, four, five of them across the front.
It is, I have to get down to see, I didn't realize that the materials were down there yet. Is it as pink as it looks on screen?
You know, I don't think it is. I think that if you look at the board here, this is a better representation of the actual color than the, than this is. I don't think it's pink at all. I mean, it's a little more tan here than it looks like in the sample to my eye.
Okay, and the, the materials are all down with Gail?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, if necessary, thi- this is a custom color, so if we need to switch it up, we can switch it up.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just a little concerned with it at the moment, but I want to see it in person.
Okay.
Anyone else? Okay. Well, thank you.
Chris, pleasure.
Sounds like we took care of a couple of matters. What's left, Brian? We'll go back to the punch list.
Brian's muted. I, we have traffic left. We're waiting on the TAC.
Thank you, Chris. I said, I just said that and I was muted, so thank you. All right, so yeah, some updates on design materials, traffic O and M, and then potentially some draft conditions. So we are getting towards the end. So.
I wouldn't mind seeing draft conditions and O and M so that we can contemplate them and not get rushed through them.
Okay, and again, I think this is on the May 21st agenda for TAC, so we likely won't be ready to really get into it at the next hearing, but certainly the one after. But we could look at the other elements, Brian, if you think you'll be ready.
Or we can skip a meeting and wait for traffic, but just work on the others.
I think, I think that will be best. I just saw Brian O'Anton, he's, he's actually the client. Brian, you popped up on the screen. Are you okay with that, Brian?
Yeah, fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think that makes sense, Mr. Chair. You know, the board's agenda's been busy and, you know, I think, you know, that that makes sense. So go out to June 9th and maybe cover all three topics and see if we're close to maybe wrapping it up. Okay. Okay, that's reasonable. Okay.
Mr. Chair, oh, you haven't done public yet. I'm ready to move on. Don't worry.
Yeah, I know, I was just about to just, I would open up the public testimony if anyone has a comment or question again about the information we heard tonight on this project. We would entertain that at this time. Please raise your hand. All right, seeing none, we'll close with the public testimony for the evening.
I move that we continue this to our first meeting in June, June 9th.
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Favor, Chip? Amy?
No, I, I'm good. Let me just ask another question afterwards.
Okay, Amy? Jim?
Yep.
Joe?
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
All right, and I say yes, okay.
We don't go to summer meetings until July and August, right? So we'll have two in June?
We definitely will, yes. And depending on our caseload, we may have to talk about what we do over the summer. I don't, you know.
Okay, but as it stands now.
Yes, June 9th and 23rd are definite. And right now, we've got the July and August, which we can reconfirm maybe at the next hearing, because then it's sort of 30 days out. We can let folks know what, and make sure that that's confirmed. But right now, yeah, July 18th, July 14th and June 11th, August 11th, sorry. So. All right, till June 9th. Thank you for the update.
Thank you very much, everyone.
All right, have a good night. So June 9th is already stacking up. Okay. That's continued. All right, so we're on to new hearings. Twenty-one to sixty-three, Michael A. Casoli, 28 Sweets or Street. I'm here on behalf of Mr. Casoli and he is here also. Mike, you here? Oh, there you are. You can, hi, Mike.
I'm here.
How are you?
Mike, long time no see. How you doing? See you.
Great. Mike is an attorney also, but I am, I have offered to help Mike tonight. We're, we're good friends and Mike is in the process of finishing up a house he's building at 28 Cedar Street. And his, Sweets or Street, I'm sorry, thanks, Mike. And he is seeking a variance, he's looking to put a swimming pool in the side yard, which is pretty common. The board sees this quite a bit, quite a bit because of the layout of the interior of the house and the way the house is situated, the uniqueness of the structure. Really, for safety purposes, the best place to put this is the most practical place to do it, is to put it in the side yard. So I try to share my, let me see here. Here we go. So this gives you idea of the, of the structure that's been, that's on this pretty significant sized lot. And the, you know, the option, if the problem Mike has, if he, if he puts it in the backyard, it's going to encroach on these folks and, but more importantly is the safety, the way this house is situated. This is the living area with the kitchens and the windows that work conducive with the pool. Mike, we have four kids now, Mike?
I do, yes.
Four children. So this allows the kids to be monitored while they're in the pool. The back of the, back of the house is a garage, which has really, you can't see it in the backyard. So Mike is, one does, has spoken to his neighbors and in particularly these folks at 30 Sweets of Street. And Mike, the reaction when you propose this to them?
Um, yeah, they, they, both, actually two different lots, but the east side of the house, and they were both fine with the pool on the side of the house, the fencing, everything that I proposed.
Yeah, and to show the board what this kind of, just kind of shows you kind of the, let me flip this around oriented. So this kind of shows you, as we're talking about the living area as it relates to the pool, garage is in the back. Little bit more detail. And then as far as the screening, this is the type of fence that Mike is proposing, six-foot-high aluminum pre-assembled fence. And he's also looking to significantly screen that from the neighbors with a budding abreviatees. These will also be, the abreviatees, Mike, will be on your side of the fence, right? So you can maintain them.
Correct.
Yeah, and to give the neighbors the good look of the fence with the abreviatees behind them. So I think when you look at the unique circumstances that relates to the shape of the structure, which is one of the standards that is a unique circumstance for the variance. You know, the hardship is, you know, basically the way our bylaws written, you know, it's quite arguable that, you know, and quite honestly, when when Mike proposed this, you know, I went to the building department and, and, you know, Jack Roberto always interpreted it that you can't do it in the side yard and the new building inspector was saying, I don't know if I really agree with that. I think, you know, but I'm going to go with what Jack did over the years. That's why these requests are really quite common with your board. So, you know, it would be a hardship and a hardship will be a safety issue that we talked about if it did go in the rear. And then as far as the detriment goes, you know, where the neighbors don't have an issue and it's going to be appropriately screened in the first-class manner, I think it easily meets that standard for requests of variance that Mike is asking for.
So Dave?
Yes, sir.
I was just going to ask a question, but if you have one, go ahead.
No, I was just going to say, are one of your butters the kidders?
Yes.
They're at 115 Pleasant? Are they the ones on that side?
They're one of the two lots on that side, the east side, yes.
Okay, so that letter we have in our record. Asserting that, yeah, they support the position, petition, as you said. We don't have any correspondence from the others, other than what you've testified, so. And the fire department didn't have any concerns. That was all the control files we received. Go ahead.
Just Tom. So glad to hear the butters are on board, but, you know, Brian, one of the questions I guess I would have is that there was a house on this site that was knocked down, right? So was this cool, a late epiphany? Because you had a clean slate there, if that's the case. And now you're coming in and asking for a variance based on safe. And, you know, far be it for me to prevent, you know, the safety for children, but I don't know, you're knocked down a building, you have a whole pretty large site there, right? And if you knew you were building a pool, you could have, you know, designed the house in a different way that you didn't use on the side yard. So help me out with that a little bit.
Mike, you could, Mike, you could probably provide more insight than me on that from Mr. Lucy.
Um, yeah, I mean, in the neighborhood that we're in, I wanted to build a house that fit in, so I, I mean, not size-wise, style-wise. There's a lot of Victorians in that neighborhood, so instead of building a contemporary house, I built a Victorian. I do not like the looks of a garage, especially in Victorians, because they usually weren't in the front of the house, they're usually behind the house or they're in a separate structure, not even attached to the house. So the garage goes behind the original structure, so as you look at the house from the street, you don't see it. You see a Victorian house with all the designs, architects, the lines, everything. And the garage goes behind. And once again, there is room in the backyard for a pool, but the living space is in the front of the house. We will not be able to see the kids in the pool. So it has, it goes to design and trying to fit in my neighborhood, but also building a house that is going to fit my family.
It just seems like you built your own problem, though. I hear you.
I mean, I think, I think, Tom, you know, I hear what you're saying, you know, I respect it. I understand your struggle. You know, you know, I would submit that, you know, the house is there and, you know, and that's a structure that exists now. And, you know, and that is one of the, you know, I've actually, you know, interesting, I, you know, I've talked to town council, because, you know, he, he has a case on unique, uniqueness of structure arguments and, and it is, it is a kind of, you know, it's in the statute. You know, a lot of people focus on the unique circumstances of a lot, but it says lot or structure. And this structure is there before the pool. So I think what you're saying is, oh, did you create your own hardship, right, Tom? Did you do that by?
You had an empty lot not too long ago.
But, but the structure's there now and that has been built before the pool, so. So you're asking me to help you with it? I think that's what I'm trying to do.
Okay.
Am I going to make it perfect? If I, am I going to make it perfect for you? Probably not. I'll probably talk myself into more trouble.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I think, Brian, as you said, so obviously there has to be hardship, the hardship is the safety, but he created the safety problem.
Well, you could argue that if you wanted to. But again, you know, the, the, the structure was there before. You're saying that, you know, that, you know, I think if he was, if he was submitting a plan to build from scratch with the pool at the beginning, you know, you can say you're creating your own problem, but, you know, the pool, the pool, I don't think the pool was, you know, part of the original plan. And now, now he's asking for the pool. He didn't apply for the pool, he applied for the permit to build the house.
Is it occupied?
No, not yet.
You know, if it wasn't part of the original plan and wasn't designed around it, now we want, now someone's decided they want to put it in after the fact. I don't get it.
Well, you know, I think you know, the interesting part of it is, you know, you take, and this has been a pretty common variance that has been granted, you know, not necessarily by your board members, but over the past by Board, you know, Board of Appeals, there's a number of these have been granted because of the way the bylaw is written. It's not real practical to, in many respects, to have your pool in the backyard in many lots in Wakefield, the way many structures are situated. And what the bylaw says is that, it says you're not allowed to have a pool in the required side yard. So I would argue, you know, if you pull this back to 15 feet, you can do it by right. Jack Roberto never looked at it that way. He said, oh, required side yard means you can't have it in the side yard. I argue this with Jack to the end of the earth and said, no, Jack, it says you can't have it in the required side yard. You can have it in the backyard within seven and a half feet to the property line, but you can't have it within the required side yard, the 15 feet. If you want to put it in your side yard, 17 feet off, you can do it. Jack never bought that argument. I would argue it all the time. The current building inspector, you can ask, ask him, he tends to agree with my argument. And I didn't even mention it to him, because he said, why can't you put it here if you meet the setback requirement? And I said, well, this is the way the prior building inspector interpreted it. He said, well, then that's what I'm going to go with. That alone creates, you know, a reasoning, especially when the neighbors don't object to, you know, provide the relief so that this family can do this to improve their properties.
This is not even a legal building yet.
It's a structure, Jim.
It's a structure, but it's not legal yet. It's not been passed, it's not occupied at this point. So you can talk about it's a structure, but it's not a legal structure yet. So when we talk about, when we talk about, you know, structures and the like, normally, the structure's been there for 10, 15 years or more. And this is, this is just arrived, albeit it's been like three years under construction, because I only live a few blocks away and I've seen it. So it's like, it's not legal yet, therefore it's not a structure.
You mean no occupancy permit yet?
You have a permit to build it, but that's, that's about it.
It's, 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 it's under construction pursuant to a building permit. It's a structure. It's on the ground. It's, it's built. It's just not occupied.
I pay taxes on it.
Is there any reason? Is there any reason it couldn't be pulled into, so from what I understand, if I'm, you can just shut me off, Brian, if I'm getting this wrong. But is there any reason it couldn't be pulled within the 15 feet or upward? Within, you know what I'm trying to say, Brian?
I do, I do, Greg. Yeah, I know what you're saying. I mean, Mike, Mike, I guess the question is, can you pull it in closer to your house or no?
Um, yeah, I guess so. We could bring it closer to the house.
And then at least you have an argument with the building inspector rather than variance, maybe the building inspector.
Quite frankly, I have no problem with this at all. We've done a lot worse things and a lot tighter situations. And even if this came from us day one, I think this is the right location for the pool, given the design of the house, in my humble opinion. You can argue whether it's a structure, you can argue whether it's legal, you can argue anything. If this came to me day one, I would have been fine with it. The fact that it's coming day 30, I'm still fine with it.
I mean, you look at the house, this house is on a 29,000 five-inch square foot lot. This is not, it's a big home, but it's not a home that was put on a small lot. And it, not only the house itself, look at, look at the setbacks. I mean, the front requirement's 20 feet, it's 35, the side is 15, it's 30, and 42 and 48 in the back. So this lot can accommodate this house and I think it can accommodate the pool where it's. So this lot can accommodate this house, and I think it can accommodate the pool where it's proposed and where it fits.
And to me, Brian, and that just says that it, the pool should be within the setbacks.
Well, again, I mean, you know, I, you know, I don't, I don't know if I could convince Ben that, Greg, because he's already told me he's taken the position that Jack took. So I think I would end up having to come back on an appeal of the building inspector and then, and then away we go, because, you know, that's not the way he wants to interpret it. Right, even if you pulled it into 15, met the setback, we'd still have to grant the variance that it's in the side yard, because, right?
Yeah, but it still would be less non-conforming, there we go. Then which, I mean, albeit a couple of feet, but I mean, I think I disagree with respectfully disagree with Chip here. It's very, I think there's only been one in the side yards since I've been on the board. Maybe there was a lot before, and it was, you know, a house that was on a corner lot.
Oh, there's been, there's been.
No, I'm not saying there hasn't been a lot, but since I think I've been on the board for three years and I own number one in the side yard.
And, and you know, I never, you know, and, and I don't, and I think the board knows me, I'm not like saying that, saying, oh, you, you know, this has happened before, you need to give it to him. You know, that's not, every case needs to stand on its own, and I'm a big advocate for that, and that's what the law says. So the reason I mention that is, it, it's, it's been practiced that way because of the odd circumstances of the way the bylaw is written. And the fact that a lot of people want to put their pools in their side yards for probably safety reasons. That's where they want them, because that's where they can see them, not behind the house.
You know, I, I, I don't see this location as a problem. I see more of the process basically that we're pursuing at this point, more of a problem. I mean, there's other shapes that might fit in there. I don't have an issue with it being on the side yard, particularly knowing what happens in the structure, but you know, it's, it's, it just seems like we're stretching it a bit here.
You know, I think part, I think part of the, I think part of the benefit to the neighbors is, you know, part of what Mike has committed to them is, is this fencing and shrubbery and you know, not, and he probably would do it anyways, but you know, that's all part of the package that's happening here. So it's not only a package for his property, but it's a package for these two abutters, which I think is why, you know, one of them wrote that they support it, they actually support it, not that they don't have a problem with it, the other one has told Mike the same thing. Yeah, it still seems close to the lot line for me. I just, I think I'd feel better if it was farther away. Just, there's a noise factor too, you know, kids in the pool. The neighbors, I mean, again, you're never gonna have soundproof, but the buffer will help a little. I just, I think I'd feel more comfortable farther away from the lot line. I don't know that the standard would change in my mind, you know, in terms of granting a variance and finding that criteria, but practically speaking. I know we've done some side yards and each one is unique. This one's certainly unique in different ways. Given the size of the lot and the way it lays out. I think I'd just rather see it farther away from the lot line personally. To feel more comfortable about.
How far, Dave?
Well, meeting the setback. So if we can find 5.2 feet and still make it work. I assume the gray around the pool area is a paver or some sort of patio.
Yeah, that wouldn't be a problem at all. We can definitely get it to the, to the 15 feet required.
I mean, do other board members feel, I know, Chip, you've said you're okay with it as is, but anyone else?
I agree with that, Dave. This is Greg.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Chair, you're talking 9.8 feet, but then you have the 7.5, so where we talk with 15 feet here?
A side yard setback.
You have 7.5 at the other pinch point there.
Just to be within the setback, and whenever the lowest distance.
So you've got to move it more than five feet, now you're talking.
I always see the way the lot line curves.
7.5 feet.
Yeah.
On that corner, just.
7.5 feet. I mean, obviously it's parallel with the house, so it's positioned, so it goes parallel with the house, so the whole thing would move and stay parallel with the house. So it'll be 7.5 feet in that corner, correct?
So you would have to, to get the 15 feet, you're not moving at five, now you're moving at seven and a half.
So Mike, you probably would have to, Mike, you probably would have to take off some of your patio type area here, right?
Yeah, and the patio is gonna be all around. Um, it shouldn't be a problem.
Yeah, we can, we can, to keep hearing, that can be done, Mr. Chair.
Hey, guys, if this was an above-ground pool, it's legal. Just FYI. And they don't even have to come to us. The fact that he's doing a beautiful in-ground patioed pool, we're screwing them instead of letting them do an above-ground pool by right. The whole conversation isn't making a lot of sense to me, guys. I'm sorry.
I don't know if I would.
Why, why is it allowed? Why is it, why is it allowed?
Because it's an accessory. It is, it's an accessory and it can go in the side yard without.
Anything deeper than two feet is required. That's, that's the, the bylaws, two feet. So it's deeper than two feet, it's required.
Correct, correct. But anyway, just whatever. Move it, do whatever, but.
Well, Mike, I mean, you're saying, I mean, you're saying you can move it back, right?
I, I can move it closer to the house, not back. I'm gonna move it closer to the house.
So you, I mean, can you make it comply to 15 feet on the side?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
My, my wife and kids want a pool and I will do whatever in case to get my wife and kids a pool. I've already spent a lot of money on this house, and another $100,000 for a pool is what it is.
Keep going.
I mean, I don't know, other people on this board have kids in a wife, well, wife or a husband, you know what? You gotta make your family happy and they want a pool. I want a house up along Lake Gossipy or up in Lake One Basaki, but they want a pool. So here we are.
So we really have a marital problem here. We don't, we don't have.
We've got a long night.
All have marital problems. We have to make everybody happy, and my kids are very important to me.
All right, so.
I'm fine with the location on the side, just move it away.
Okay. And is that something board members are comfortable doing? If we were to proceed to granting said variance with that adjustment, we would get an updated plan after, and not making them continue and come back?
I'm fine with it.
Okay. Unless there's anything else, I'm gonna open it up, see if anyone else has a thought. Any member of the public wishes to raise a question or a comment at this time, please raise your hand in the Zoom meeting. Seeing your hands will close with the public testimony.
I move that we grant the petitioner permission to build a pool in the side yard based on the, based on the diagram from Ed Farrell dated 33021 presented to us tonight. Based on this shape of the structure and the accessibility to the safety that the pool would present in its current location. With the condition that it moves and meets all side yard setbacks of 15 feet. And that a new plan is presented prior to the issuance of a bill.
Thank you, Chip. And we'll second that one.
Second.
Who was that, Greg?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I'll send you a second, then you're on it.
I didn't think about that.
Um. So, so.
This is Jack, and sit this while.
Joe, okay. Thanks. All right, so Dave, Jim, Chip, Amy and Greg. So with that, Chip?
Yes.
Greg?
Sorry, Dave, I'm actually recusing myself on this one.
You're gonna speak up sooner now, Amy. All right, Joe, you're back on it. Chip, you said yes. Greg?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay. That's unanimous. All right. Make your wife and kids happy, Mike.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Finish in the house.
Thank you.
That appears to be our last new hearing, right? Because we heard that one up front. Heard that one out of order, that one's continued, okay. All right, so now we're on to other matters. According to my agenda, 168 Albion Street, AKA 178 Albion Street, Harvard Mills, review and discuss signage. Are we ready to do that?
Yeah, we are, I think.
Mark, hi, Mark.
Hi.
Mark Schreberg is here. And Janice Cowl's here too. Hi, guys. So the board had a discussion on the signage, and Mark, do you want to bring it up on the screen or? Jim, you would, Jim McBane, a board member at Bain, you were prepared, kind of the, the plan showing the kind of your thoughts on it? Jim, do you want to bring that up, or do you want us to bring it up?
You're gonna have to bring it up, because I don't have the capacity here.
Mark, can you do that or no?
Okay, yeah, I believe Janice can do that for.
Could you do that?
Yep, sorry, give me one second.
Thanks, Janice.
Thanks, Janice.
And I think it's a comeback from last time. We were also gonna talk about the site itself. Yeah, we're gonna do that too.
Yes, we do. We've got some construction personnel on to talk about that.
Great, thank you.
Cards deep in the files.
Take your time. I've been there. It's not like 35 people are watching you.
Pressure is on.
Yeah.
Okay, how do we show the screen? There we go. Okay, can you see the screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Mark, I don't know if you want to walk through this, or?
Yeah.
Yeah, go, go back. I'm gonna tell you where to go. Keep going, Jim. Okay, I think I'd leave it there.
Yeah, let's leave it in the courtyard signage there.
Do you want to leave it here, Mark, with the gray or back to the?
Right, right here. Yeah, this is a perfect place to start.
So, go ahead. I mean, Mark, why don't you just tell your board, the board your thoughts on this again?
Sure.
We can talk.
Absolutely. But, yeah, but, well, board members, thank you for hearing us this evening. Very happy to re-present signage here to you. We had a discussion with Mr. McBane earlier this week, and we understand how he is calculating the areas for these signage and the number of signage against the code. We do think that the signage package that we put together is appropriate for the building, the history of the building, the, our project itself and to market our project. And we think what we've, what we've done, what we've tried to do here is tie everything together to weave all of these various concerns together into a signage package that we think really shows the building nicely. So as, as we, what we're looking at here is the courtyard signage on Albion Street. You saw some of this courtyard amenity space during initial approvals. We always had a sign planned for this exterior wall, though, this wall is creating some private patio space for our tenants. But is a very public space in the courtyard and along Albion Street. So you can see that initially the rendering showed a sign there. What we've done is we've now created and branded something that includes the history of the mill. And you can see there on the center, the, the large central sign, which is numbered to its location, number two. That the, there's a painting, this is actually a hand-painted image taken from a historical picture of the Wakefield Mill Building when it was operating as a undergarment manufacturing plant, factory. And the, there's actually a retail space you can see there in the central area that no longer exists. It's since been torn down. It used to connect the East and West Mills. But we thought it was a very nice thing to include on this particular sign. So this, again, this is hand painted, it's preserved, it will stand the test of time and remain looking something like what is shown there. The, the idea for the weaving pattern has a direct representation to, you know, the history of this building. And then you can see our branding for, for our project, Brac and Loss and Wakefield Station. It is, you know, not the main presence of the sign by any means. We think that the size of the lettering is appropriate for passersby either in car or if you're a pedestrian walking down the street. And it's, you know, set back from the, the main public right of way by a number of feet, 10 to 15 feet. So it's not something that's right in your face. Janice, if we can go to the Albion facing sign, please, to the left. And zoom out, Janice, just so everyone can see where this is located in the courtyard. So there noted as sign number one. This signage is meant to face the church and Albion Street proper. It will not, you will not have a view of this sign until you're, you know, really driving right past the courtyard. So this is to give a little bit of an idea of what the project is from Albion Street as you're, you know, walking from the train station down or past, past the church on the other side of the street. Again, just a little bit of branding and, and some nice lighting on a smaller sized sign. All of the wood on these walls is reclaimed from the existing mill building. So again, another historical leak. Janice, if we could go to the third sign, please. The third sign is where Janice is indicating, sign number three. It is facing back out of the courtyard, and you would be able to see this sign as you're walking either way past the entry to the courtyard. It is set back about 20 feet from the main public right of way. This signage is very historical in nature. It is meant to indicate it's, it's meant to tell a story. And the story is that Elizabeth Boyd, one of the partners and owners of the mill, was a trailblazer. She was one of the first women business owners. She was one of the first women bank presidents. And the story goes that her partner kept the, the work bells ringing even during the depression when, when there was no work to be had. She was on her deathbed. Of course, Elizabeth's house still stands in Wakefield. And she was, again, on her deathbed and her partner rang the bells to indicate that people were still working. It was her life's work. And she actually created an employee ownership program for the mill workers. So, so this plaque is meant to tell that story, and the bell is a symbol of, of the story. We think it's, it's, again, it ties in with the history, the place, and the town. She was a very important figure in the town of Wakefield. So that's our courtyard, and we think it's a very sensitive treatment. We do understand that the size of this, these signs are in question. And the way that we figured it is that the, the actual lettering for the signage, we would call signage, the rest of this is, you know, part of a history, and especially the Boyd Bell plaque, I think, is more of a historical plaque than signage. So we're happy to, you know, listen to your thoughts on this, but that's the way we've looked at this, these particular, this trio of signs. And Janice, if we could just go on, and then I'm happy to take questions or answer comments at the end here. This next sign is on the concrete retaining, retaining wall that is at the main Albion Street entry. It's a nice size address sign. Really not a marketing sign at all. This, to me, is more important for the fire department and the emergency services and people trying to find the, you know, the project, obviously. So simply says 168 Albion Street. There's no other branding, no colors. It's a black sign, black lettering, and simple in nature. and simple in nature. So again, when we spoke with Jim, this sign seemed to be over the allowable limit if you're including the whole wall as signage. I think when we spoke with Jim and Jim, I don't want to put words into your mouth, but I think you thought this was a little bit more appropriate because it is a site wall. It's, it's, it's holding up our landing for the entryway.
Well, it's, it's not, it's not, in this particular case, in my opinion, by the code is that this sign, the backdrop of this is not part of the sign. The sign is strictly the lettering is what it is. I mean, this, you take this in comparison with the previous signs, basically, where there's this huge backdrop that everything sits on. So the issue, can we go back to that for a minute? So the issue in these particular cases is that the sign is the whole that is the backdrop that it sits on as well as the lettering, all of which become fairly large and exceed the requirements, basically, on, on this. And when it comes to the historical plaque, the plaque alone, which is to the right, is in excess of what's, we would be required for that type of sign as well. I think for the board to understand, basically, is there are a bunch of articles that, in my opinion, don't meet the requirements, but it's up to this board whether, in fact, they want to vary the requirements to allow for this signage, and I would support for that. Now, someone's outlined the, the brick wall. I don't see the brick wall as part of the sinus, but it's just the wood in the backdrop of the wood, just to be clear. So I support what's being shown, but I've also done a spreadsheet that shows the items that need to be asked of the board to allow for variance in this, in this particular signage package.
Yeah, and Jim, maybe that's the best thing to do is, Janice, can we pull up Jim's tally sheet there? And we can look at it kind of sign by sign as to what, what are, how we exceed the code.
So, Mr. Chairman, can I ask why the boy? I'm confused why the Boyd Bell would be considered a sign as compared to a historical placard that we either do or don't have rules on. It's not promoting the grace and loss in any what way.
It's, it's twenty square feet when in fact it's allowed to be ten.
As a what?
As a plaque, as a other sign.
But it's not a sign. It's a historical plaque.
Well, then you're gonna.
It's a story.
It's gonna have to go in and read it for yourself and make your own determination. That's why I'm here, basically, to make, to give my opinion. You, you all can read the code yourself and make your own opinion.
I did, and my opinion is that first of all, I'm okay with all of it. I just question whether the Boyd Bell as a historical placard is considered a sign. It has no Gray Loss or Station or anything else promoting the project other than historical placard.
Well, all they have to do is ask for a variance, basically, from
Right.
190-77.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think, I think at the end of the day, the gist is this, that there's certain aspects that we need, you know, we're not going to meet all the requirements, so we need to apply for a variance. I think, I think what we wanted to determine was, you know, are we wasting our time doing that because it's a forward sign variance?
Right. We just kind of like to know the appetite. I mean, listen, we've tried to do the best we, we could for not only the project, the community, the location, obviously, we're, we're on the Albion Street corridor. And I think that, you know, this project was always kind of seen as an anchor project for the redevelopment of Albion Street. So we've, we've taken all of that into consideration here. And, and it's not that we're, you know, in love with all of this. We like it. We think it's, it suits all of the needs appropriately. We spent a lot of time on it, of course. And, you know, we'd, we'd like you guys to see it the same way. That doesn't mean that we're not open to, you know, comments here. And there's, there are some other signs in this package that, that Jim had shown did not meet. So, yeah, I do think we should just go through those quickly so everyone understands, you know, where we are according to the code. And then happy to talk further about, you know, what the appetite is. You know, we, we'd like to not draw this out, of course. We do have, you know, we're, we have appropriate time to settle this and make sure that everybody's happy, including all of the board members and any community members that, that might have a say. So Janice, can we go back to the tally sheet that Jim had sent us? So we, we covered the Boyd Bell, the wall sign and the sign facing Albion Street proper. Janice, there were some door signage in there.
You don't have to go to it, Mark. I mean, you know, yeah, I mean, bottom line is we want our door signs to be a little bit bigger than probably allowed. So when people are walking down the street, they can, they can see it.
Well, I, I think, I think the board needs to know that under the old code, they're only allowed, door signage can only be five square feet, not the ten square feet that everybody's used to.
Ten percent, you mean, Jim?
No, no, what I'm saying is, under the old code, it was five percent.
Yeah, you said square feet. It's percent.
Yeah, I'm sorry. And, and we used to ten percent, basically, for all windows. And the old code says for doorways, five percent. Now, I don't know, I really don't know what the size of the sign is because that information wasn't really given to me in relationship to the glass. But I think it's probably more than five percent. So, you know.
And Janice.
Easy, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, Jim. Janice, you did some calculation on the sign and the percentage of glass. Do you have that handy?
Over seven percent.
Just over seven percent, you said?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, so, you know, the idea here, of course, is that we'd like somebody to be able to identify what the sign says from about ten feet away. And we think that this lettering size is appropriate for that. You can see the person to give you scale here in relation to the lettering and the doorway itself. Okay. Janice, was there another sign that didn't meet the requirement?
No, I think that was all of them.
Okay.
Well, you had the two doorway on, on Foundry Street. There were two signs, one over the other on the canopy.
Yes, okay. That, that is a wayfinding sign. Janice, if you could pull it up. So the idea with this wayfinding sign is that when somebody turns down Foundry from Albion Street, going past the garage, we'd like people to be able to, to have some wayfinding. So what we've indicated here is the guest parking at the Maple Street lot. We've indicated the guest parking for the Founder Street Garage and the delivery area on Maple Street. So the sign on the right on your screen is that side of the sign is what you would see as you're going down Foundry from Albion. And then coming back up Foundry from Maple towards Albion, you can see the guest parking sign indicating the garage across the street. So that's the wayfinding signage. We could split this up to be a number of different signs. We felt like it was a little bit less intrusive to the architecture and the building. And, you know, visually, as you're looking down the street to have it all on one sign.
Well, it's also, it's also the fact that the building is so long. I mean, in, in most cases, you're only allowed one particular type of sign on a wall. So it's either an occupancy sign or it's a pedestrian sign, basically, and they give the number quantities of these. So because of the length of these, you're ending up with more signs than generally would be allowed because they're not figuring the building's going to be several hundred feet long. But it's still, it's still based on the face of, of that particular building on that particular side. So again, you sort of have to ask for relief.
Yes, understood.
It's like, I don't mind the signage. It's just that you need to ask for a bunch of reliefs. If the board has pointed out, the rest of the board agrees with the signage that's presented, then it's just a matter of you guys to chase the relief.
Understood. So I, I think that's our presentation and signage. Happy to take questions or, or comments. And we'll look towards asking for some relief if it seems like that's the best path forward.
Okay, there are clearly other signs on the property. And Jim, your assessment was two, three pages long, so.
Yes, and, and it, yes, it was three pages long, which I referenced the, I referenced the sections and everything else for the relief they would ask and what and where they failed, basically. So it's pretty clear for everybody. I, I think the, the only, the only one that I, I basically thought would be the biggest problem would be, what's the definition of a sign, particularly on Albion Street? Whether, in fact, the whole border and the lettering is the sign or just the lettering's a sign?
Okay.
So, but the rest of it, you know, there is the aggregated area for all these signs as well. So, you know, once you add up all these extra signs, you're only allowed so many when you're within a hundred square, a hundred feet of the, of the street. And to me, to me, it's an easy thing. You just come and come back to the board, cluster them up and ask for relief on these particular items. Unless, unless board members don't like the signs.
Right. And, and that's what I'd like to understand this evening, if we could. Like to understand, you know, what people think of this signage package and if there's some appetite to approve of it.
The Albion Street signs that you see before you are the most, is the most dense area as far as signage. Everything else is scattered out. They might be multiple signs when, in fact, you can have multiple signs. The building's like, you know, several hundred feet long, so multiple signs makes sense. Code doesn't allow for it.
And multiple sides and a parking garage. And, yeah. I, I like the, the, the style of these signs. I, I have an appetite for it, Mark. If that's what you want to hear. Speaking as one member.
That's what I'd like to hear. Thank you.
And it sounds like Jim perhaps has an appetite. Anyone else?
Sounds good. I like them.
So obviously, everybody knows where I stood on this project. There's no question about that. One thing that I have always appreciated, though, is the thoughtfulness that you guys have put into everything you've done and, and you've been deliberate with your design and I appreciate that. I love the reclaimed wood. That's been my favorite part the whole time, even if I wasn't on board with the project. That's been a big thing for me. I love the signs. I think that this one looks beautiful. As far as the other sign goes, that's something I always, I think, go back and forth with Jim on. I don't agree that the whole sign is the sign, if it's just the letters that are, not this one, the other one, the Albion Street side. I think that it should only count the actual letters that are on, on the sign, not the background, because where else are the letters going to go? So in my opinion, I don't look at that whole thing as a sign. But for me, I, I think that everything looks great.
Great. Thank you, Amy. And, and your opinion always has carried a lot of weight with us because we would like everybody to be happy with, with what we've done. So thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Okay, so we all set on that one? You'll, you'll apply and we'll, we'll have this discussion all over again?
Sounds good. I, I can't wait for another late night.
You'll be a true, you'll be a true applicant then, Mark. You might be earlier.
Very good.
That's my question. Does it become another matter or is it a?
Needs an application for assigned variance, yeah.
Yeah, I thought we just can, I just thought we, okay. I thought we just held jurisdiction.
We did, but I, I think if they've got this much of non-compliance. Retain jurisdiction if it was going to be compliance size, but when you go over the limit statutorily, it's got to be a variance.
Yeah, and, and I don't know if we can do that in two weeks, but we can be ready in two weeks if, if that's acceptable.
Not under this, we'll go over, Mark, does this, the application waiting period and publication and notice is going to take longer than that?
Okay.
Yeah.
Fine.
It might be like late June or something, depending on how quickly you pull it together and apply, but we'll, we'll see it again on an upcoming agenda. All right, as for the other topic.
But yeah, so, yeah, we have Tom Nodd, our site super, who is very sensitive to the issue of Foundry Street and has a schedule to discuss with us, as well as Matt Trider, our vice president of construction. And I'm gonna let them take over and answer any questions that you have about Founder Street and reopening and scheduling.
Yeah, and let me, before they go, let me just say to the board members that, that Greg, Board Member McIntosh, you know, raised a concern on the, kind of the tidiness of Foundry Street and, and requested that, you know, we address it right away. And I did do that with Greg in the chair. We, I sent correspondence the next day. And then I've been monitoring it myself since then. And, and I think, you know, I didn't see it before, so I don't know what it was, but I think it's, it's looked pretty good for the past couple of weeks. And certainly, Tom, who runs the site, can address that. And your intent to keep it, keep it up, Tom, and with what the status is on Foundry Street. You muted, Tom. You muted, Tom.
Sorry about that, guys. We only do it like ten times a day, right? Um, so, you know, I, I heard word about the cleanliness of, of the, of the street. You know, and there was, there was, there was an issue with, with the way it was looking. And I, you know, to be honest with you, I agree with you because it was, it, you know, I don't know if, I don't know if anybody can, can recall a year where it's been as windy as it's been in, in Massachusetts. You know what I mean? It's, it's, the winds that come down that street have been strong enough to literally pick drywall out of my dumpsters. And, and that's what was happening. You know, we'd have a full dumpster and we're waiting for the, for waste management to come pick it. You know, we, we have, we, we schedule four picks a day. And in between those picks, when that wind would come down, it would just, it, it was, and it was unbearable because I was getting all the trash from down all the way down Founder Street, you know, and it was, I, we put labor at it. We've, we've, we've put a, you know, I got a guy full time outside on that street making sure that it's clean. And I know for, you know, there was a couple of days there where it wasn't as clean, but as a, a super, I always take pride in, in, in the cleanliness of my projects. And, you know, once I heard that, that, that it was, it wasn't looking as, as good as it should, we've, we've put extra effort into keeping it clean and, and getting it clean and keeping it clean.
Okay, thank you, Tom. We appreciate that. Again, it's unfortunate it got to that point and we had to, we had to reach out and try to, you know, put an extra emphasis on it. It would have, but we'd appreciate it going forward that it stays that way.
Yeah, well, I think one of the other issues, Mr. Chairman, is I was a bit surprised to see that Foundry Street has been shut down for as long as it is and has been. I was not seeing that on the construction schedule, so I'd like to know what the schedule is for reopening Foundry Street.
We, you know, to keep everything safe and to get, I still have brick repointing, siding, window installation on Foundry, and then obviously, we got to redo the sidewalks. So, and, and, you know, the, the fire department has asked that we keep the dumpsters ten feet off the building. So with that ten feet off the building, that puts one of those cans right in the, you know, it's on, it, it lands it halfway on the street. So our, we would, we would really appreciate if we could keep it closed until September 1st. If, if, you know, before school, obviously, school's got to open, you know, the week after the first week of September, and we are, we know that that is an important thing. And we would, we would like to keep it closed until school reopens in the, in the fall. Just for a safety concern, I mean, we, to have, to have somebody while I'm putting siding up, to have a pedestrian walk down there without a hard hat on, and, and God forbid, something comes off that building. And, and it's, it's, it's just to me, to keep people off of it for a few more months to let us finish up. It, it just, it makes sense.
There's not another way that, that can be, you know, restricted to that half of the, the road. Um, I'm concerned, you know, safety issue wise, you know, God forbid, there's a fire or police emergency that's down the street. And our emergency vehicles now have to go around the block, which is already, that area is very bad driving around lately. Um, is there another way to, to, you know, scaffolding or something? That you can put up along the sidewalk that would prevent that, like keep the road itself open, even if it's part of it?
Just with the amount of stuff that we have going on, with, with, and even, you know, down the road, we, we, we're possibly gonna have to redo the street. So um, as far as emergency vehicles getting down the street, that, that, you know. In talks with the fire department and the police department, there's never, we, we're not gonna, we never leave anything blocking the road completely. So they can always get uh, uh, an emergency vehicle down there if need be. Um, it, there, there, I'm, I'm sure there are other ways to, to try to circumvent the issue, it's. Uh, as far as time's concerned, you know, we just wanna get on the street, get all this work done as fast as we possibly can and get off. I'm saying September first, but in reality, i- if, if, if everything goes well, we could, we could, we could, you know, open it up a little sooner than that.
And, and Amy, just, you know, the, what's going on there has been planned by the building department and the. DPW and the public safety. So, you know, they participated in how this staging is occurring, you know, just for that reason that Tom's talking about, for safety for pedestrians. Because that, and we have meetings on this, we talked about doing scaffolding coverage that people, like they did on one seventy-five North Ave. You know, for the kids that walk to school, and at that time, the building inspector was Jack Roberto. And he said, no way, not, not with, not with, not with this building, not gonna do it, just for, if something falls, it, it's not, it's not safe, so. I, 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 I don't think, I, I think I want, I, I do want the board to know, that's not that the, the NRP is just saying, we're gonna do this, they can't, they can't do that. This has been done in conjunction with the, with the building. Um, and the um, safety people, public safety, and when it was initially set up, the school department participated in it too. In the discussions on how it was gonna work.
Brian, did we ever get an update when all those discussions happened as to what was gonna happen as part of the construction update?
I don't think so, Chip, I don't know if that, I, you know, I don't know if that was required, to be honest with you. Um, you know, the way this was done was that it was gonna be the jurisdiction of Jack Roberto in, in the public safety.
Well, we're supposed to get a construction schedule and updates on construction schedule, so this would certainly be a part of the construction schedule. But I think in the future, if you're shutting down roads, I think we'd like to know about it at the beginning, because that impacts a lot of our decisions.
And, and Chip too, to that point, I think a lot of the concern is coming from because it was represented to us. I should say represented, that makes it sound official, when we spoke at meetings and we asked about this, I think we were told it was this project that. There wouldn't be much staging on Foundry Street. Uh, you know, might be shutdowns during the day, because they had rented other places or something along those lines. Um, on Foundry Street for staging, so I thought we had talked about that, so it was kind of a, a shock when it's been closed down for so long.
I would agree on that point, right?
Okay, learning point for us to.
Yeah. Well, again, knowing what they were able to manage something on one seventy-five and some other projects that didn't shut down entire streets, obviously, so this.
Yeah, and I get it's not our jurisdiction and that Brian's absolutely correct, it's fire, police, building department, school. I, I guess I'd just like to be informed where it's a project that we still have jurisdiction over.
Point well taken. All right, well, again, certainly reasonable goal to be reopened before school starts again, and everything's sort of perhaps more full-time and. Also the normal, quote unquote, normal.
Now granted, you can't go anywhere at the end of Foundry Street, because you can't take a left, but.
Maybe by September, maybe by September.
Maybe.
Absolutely brutal, well, and again, it's a cumulative effect. All of this, again, it's not our jurisdiction at this point, you know, what's going on out there and Broadway, it's not our jurisdiction, but it's just unfortunate. Because people just see it and they, and they, they react, they write the item, they get on social media and they just think it's just one. One big mess and the town doesn't care, and we do care, it's just, you know. We just gotta get this stuff moving along and, and done, um, so we can get things reopened. Um, okay, well, anything else, board members, I, I think we got kind of what we were looking for. And appreciate the folks hanging on, I don't know if you've been on the full time, but we appreciate you.
But, thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
All right, we're moving on to North Ave, three oh one North Ave, twenty dash eleven, twelve, thirteen. Wakefield Investments LLC discussing uh certificate of occupancy. Correct, uh, I'm here on behalf of Wakefield Investments. Um, this is the project that's been completed at three oh one North Ave. Um, I think is Jeff Schultz, you and Jeff is on representing uh the owner. Um, and the reason we wanted to get on the agenda is, um, I think, I think. You know, I've heard comments that, you know, this was a former office building that was converted to. Uh, the twelve residential units, and, and if you remember, they came back for the modification to put the black trim on the building, black windows, fencing, landscaping. You know, the project looks absolutely beautiful, and it's a hundred percent complete. Um, they're ready to uh request their occupancy permit, they have tenants ready to move in. Um, one of the, can you see the um, can you see the screen, board members?
Yes.
Put up, okay, so the issue that we wanted to talk to you about in that regard is, is they want to apply for their, for their building permit, I mean, for their occupancy permit. But uh, they're not fully done with the affordable um marketing plan approval. Um, it's, e- everything has been submitted to the state, but the state is behind. So we have a, a condition here under seventeen prior to the application for the issuance of occupancy permit. The applicant just submit proof to the board that the regulatory agreement relating to the affordable dwelling unit um in the form satisfactory to the town is recorded. Okay, that's not done because the state has to approve it. Um, one of the key components, this is not the situation that we had on sixty-nine Foundry Street. Where some of the units weren't completed, because all of the units are completed, even the affordables are completed. And um, they're in the process of trying to get the state approval, the state is backed up. And it's gonna take probably um, a few months. I, 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 uh, there's two things that I did on this for the board. Um, I asked, um, I asked. The affordable consultant, um, where she stood on this to give the board an update. And she said that the town, the town has approved the Lips application, Lips or, uh, applica- Lips only application. Um, uh, unit only application that was sent to DHCD on May fifth, so that's all been submitted to the town and approved by the town. She says the DHCD will take two, three months to review and approve. Once we have the approval on both the application and regulatory agreement, we begin the sixty-day marketing period for the affordable units. Two to three weeks after the deadline, water will be conducted and the affordable, affordability moving can happen. Assuming DHCD approves within three months, we're looking at about six months, she said, before the affordability will be leased. But all the state approvals will happen before. So, uh, our affordable consultant has been working hand in hand with Erin Kokinder, the community economic development director on this. Because she has taken a role on this. Um, so she's, she, what we're asking is, is that your board will allow the certificate of occupancy to be issued, because again, the affordable units are built. I talked to the building inspector, he's ready to issue the CO for all, all of, for the entire building. Uh, he does not want to issue these rental units, one unit at a time in a small building like this. So, um, Gail Conroy, your secretary, has a correspondence. Uh, from Erin Kokinder that was sent today and it states, good morning, Gail, good morning. I'm running in support of issuing the occupancy permits for three oh one North Ave tonight at the zoning board of appeals meeting. My office has been working closely with Maureen O'Hagan, director of the lottery programs at MCO Housing Services, which is our consultant. In finalizing a regulatory agreement and um Lips application unit, the two, two affordable units of three oh one North Ave. You've submitted the agreements to Mass Department of Housing Community Development. And due to delays there, we have not been able to record the regulatory agreement yet. We'll keep the zoning board of appeals in the loop of all these agreements and the affordable units. As mentioned, we fully support issuing the occupancy permits for three oh one North Ave, do not want to hold up. Uh, in the way other occupants, because um, the owners have other people that are ready to move in. Uh, that need a place, need a home. So there's no risk to the town on this, the units are complete, that's what the building inspector is gonna issue them for, everything has been submitted to the state. Um, but it just doesn't seem practical um to just wait for the state for six months to, to, to uh get the paperwork back. And did, and did we, did your client apply at the earliest possible opportunity and it's purely the state's backup? Um, you know what, Dave, I, you know, I, 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 I can't say that, um, you know, I can tell you this. Um, we went through like four different, trying to find, trying to find a consultant. Now is almost impossible. Um, I referred them months ago to like four different people. And especially when you're dealing with a small project like this, they don't want to do it. Um, because, you know, they're, they're like two units, I, I can't charge enough, I've got, you know, multi, multi families with mega units and, and, and that's what, those are the projects that are consuming me. So, you know, we're not interested in, in, I sent them to a lot of the, tried to send them to a lot of the people that I've used in the past. They weren't interested, they finally found Maureen O'Hagan, who was, who was willing to take it on. So, um, we tried to do it earlier, but it's just, you know, it's just not easy to get it done at this point. Okay, no, just trying to understand, I'm, I'm generally in favor, I, I see, again, you, if it's complete, I, you know, in, in light of what happened with these other ones where we're. Trying to issue letters and say we're generally okay, but except for this, we're gonna hold this back and, you know, and I even talked to town council about it, he's like. You know, it's really not a practice we want to get into as a board, the project should just be done, then you get your permit, right? Um, so if we're gonna entertain this again, we just have to be, I think, very judicious and considering, okay. They've done their due diligence, the project's really done, it's really now just in the state's hands, and, and are we comfortable just writing that letter again? And saying, you know, at his discretion, the building inspector, it still has it, their discretion, but we would see, we would say that they've met our conditions. Uh, with the stipulation that this thing, you know, sees its way through, per, per the condition in our decision, right?
I guess what I'd be curious is, I haven't gone down and looked at three oh one. Has anybody else gone and looked at it to see that they've met all our conditions?
No, other than, other than, right, other than a drive-by, basically, I, I haven't been.
Yeah, same here, other than a drive-by, we haven't, I don't know that we've been invited to the site to say, look, all the things that we said we would do, yeah, please come visit and.
We have not been yet.
No, not that I know of.
Now, there's not a whole lot there, the drive-by shows much of it, but. You know, the handicap ramp on the side, the black doors, the black shutters, all the changes that we had. Has it been built in accordance with what we, the conditions? I can't even remember the conditions we put on it, I don't think there were many, if any.
And driving around the back, whatever might have been done back there, yeah. So would, would board members feel more comfortable before doing that, that we at least have that opportunity and then potentially? Yeah, really, really, the only thing you had was um, there was no signage approved, um, Jeff, you on?
Do you have the?
Yeah, I'm gonna bring it up, Chip. Can do that for you, Jeff, you on?
Yeah, I'm here.
Yeah, because maybe you can give some insight, so these are the conditions and the decision. Uh, typical retained jurisdiction, I'll tell you where, uh, has to be built according to the site plan and architectural landscaping plan, which you know you modified with the colors. Um, applying for building per mock-up panel, um, prior to commencing work. See, Jeff, did you pay the INI fee yet? I'm sure the DPW got that for me, that was a fifty-four hundred bucks.
I, I believe so, Brian.
Yeah, you can confirm that. Um, okay, O and M plan that was done.
Um, yeah.
Okay. Landscaping all done, good weather.
Landscaping is done, irrigation's uh tied in, yep.
Okay, okay.
So normally, we look at the landscaping, we look at the irrigation.
Side, how about the sidewalks, it number twenty guys, at the completion of the project, the sidewalks adjacent to the property on North Ave, should we repay in the same condition or better? What's going on with the sidewalks, Jeff?
Uh, so, I mean, that was an issue when we, when we first looked at it, the um, the sidewalk was, was relatively new. And I think the uh, when, when you looked at the street view on the uh, on Google, it was an old beat-up sidewalk. And I think that's what some people looked at when they put that in, it, it's a relatively new sidewalk.
So you have accessible ramps?
We do.
On either side ends?
Yeah.
That's basically it, there was a landscaping plan too, do you want to see the landscaping plan?
Every, everything's been done uh landscaping-wise, ba- based on the plan, I was there with, while the landscaper was doing it.
Well, that's great, you're the developer, you're gonna tell us that, no offense, Jeff, but that's. No, no offense, that's, I mean, normally, we're invited to the site, we make sure that all the conditions are met before we tell Ben that they are. And we haven't done that here yet.
Yeah, I mean, that's the process, we're fine with that, obviously.
Yeah.
It, you know, not that we have to be fine with it, but we're fine with it. Okay, so. Meaning it's your decision, not ours, so, and I think.
Man, I think that's one of the, the things we normally do, and in order to tell Ben we're okay with it, I think. You know, it's okay to hear that all the areas are landscaped and sprinklers working, but we normally want to see that.
Yep. Okay, do, uh, we want to set up something? I figured Mr. McMahon will be out there tomorrow morning at about eight.
That won't happen.
Do you want to try to set up, sometimes we set these up sort of after the meeting and through email. Who, what board members will go out?
I'll go.
I can go till it's right down the street, by the way, I do think the project looks good, Brian.
Thank you, Tom. All right, so Tom and Amy, just copy the plans in hand and, or at least somebody on site has them. Yeah, what I can do is I can, I can, I'll email you both the final plans, because I have them, that way you'll have them, you know, through, you know, if go looking for them.
And somebody should meet them, Brian, and turn on the sprinklers and make sure all the beds are, are sprinkled.
Yep. I'll, if it's okay, I'll email both board members tomorrow and, and ask to, to set up a time.
I can meet anyone on site with plans, landscape plans and show them everything's, everything's done.
Perfect.
Okay.
Okay. And then, and once I get confirmation that that's happened, they'll let me know.
Yeah.
And I can draft something uh accordingly. Okay. Any other comments, questions on that, board members, we're good? Okay, sounds like a plan, thank you. Thanks, Jeff.
All right, thank you, thank you, boy.
Have a good night, yep. All right, next other matter, seven Glendale Ave, discussing a wall, not Amy, I suppose. Save the best for last, so, um, Joe, are you on still, you're awake?
Uh, yep, yeah, me.
There is, so I think the board knows Joe Surianello from Heritage Builders. Um, Joe has done a lot of really good single-family homes in Wakefield and. Um, this, we, we wanted to get before you on seven Glendale, that was Wildwood. Um, the, the little one-lot subdivision, um, and um, let me. Let me see if I can open this to kind of refresh your memory. So Joe was actually purchasing. A lot, and the good news for everybody is Joe's gonna be building the single-family home. Um, so this went before your board and the planning board, I think, I see Mr. Spaulding on tonight, so Bill's familiar with this, or will bring back some memories. Uh, this was where, if you remember, this is, Mr. and Mrs. Gregorio, their variance had lapsed. Um, and we're able to get a variant of, uh, some variances from your board to build this house back here. And the concern that, uh, that your board had raised some tur- uh, retained some jurisdiction on was this retaining wall that's going here. And you're, and at the time that you approved this, you said that, you know, we don't need to know now, but we want to know what you're gonna put in there. What type of wall you're gonna put in there. Uh, you were concerned that it, it, and you retained the right to approve the wall that would go in there. And your concern, I think, was that you didn't want like a landscape, uh, or I should say like a railroad tie wall, or. And you wanted it, you wanted to have a, a comfort level on what was gonna happen, so. So that's, that's the retaining wall, and Joe is actually building uh houses over here. Uh, on Glendale Ave extension, that was also approved by the planning board. Uh, on Glendale Ave extension that was also approved by the planning board that your board wasn't involved in. Um, and I think, um, you know, um, it, that, uh, Joe has been very responsive to the planning board. Uh, during his process on these, um, on these, the construction on these, on saving trees. He's worked very close with board member Lowry, he's met with him a number of times out there, I think he's, he's very, very responsive builder and does first-class work. So to cut to the chase, what Joe wants to do for the wall is what he's done on. The other property right down the street, which is. This, so he wants to do true. Joe, before I mess it up, why don't you explain what type of wall this is for the board, so I don't.
It's, uh, it's the natural stone that we, uh, actually have broken with our hammer. Uh, off the site, so all, all, so I intend to do the same on the Wildwood property. That, that one there is number four ossipee. Um, that's a hundred and fifty feet long, a pro- and no higher than four feet high.
Yeah, it's gonna be four, it won't be high.
So it's not a structural wall?
Uh, but it's, it's, it's more better than a structural, it, anything under.
No, but over, over four feet, you have, it's right, right, okay.
Correct.
There's another picture.
Yeah, that's number two ossipee. And again, it's, um, a little bit under four feet on the lower portion and then I terraced it back. Was another three-foot wall, so, cuz, uh, Ben specified nothing over four feet, so.
Without a structural engineer.
Right, so we did it like that, so we could just terrace it, do some, um, plantings in between.
And Chip, you, and you would, I think you were the one on this that you basically said.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, that's great, yeah, we didn't want.
Yeah.
I mean, that, it needs to be residential and this is residential.
Yeah.
And, and.
Concrete, natural stone, split face, beautiful, very nice work.
It's all the rock on the property.
Yeah, totally, in my opinion, totally fine.
So Dave, to document this, I, you know, I think what I do is attach those photos, you know, just and. Send a letter to you saying that, you know, that Joe has committed to build this style wall, uh, on lot two. So you have it in your file that, that that's what we've committed to.
You need to say in your letter, under four feet?
I would call it a blasted stone, natural blasted stone wall, less than four feet.
Yeah, cuz Greg, you guys, Greg, you guys retained jurisdiction to approve what the wall was gonna be, so.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, just make sure you also say that it's under four feet.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
Yeah, then we'll, then we'll check it, yeah.
Chip, what, what, Chip, what do you call it?
It's a blasted, it's a natural blasted flat-faced stone wall.
Blasted flat face.
That's what I, um, if, Joe might call it something else.
I call it broke, breaking.
Broke, broken, broken stone, hey, you broke your hammer too, bro.
If Joe ran into a four-foot issue with the board having a problem with them terracing it with two shot walls?
No.
Right, that's what I did on the other one and Ben was.
No, I think, I, I think to Chip's point, basically, it fits in with that area, which if you remember, is very, got a lot of boulders and rocks and everything.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's sort of blends in with the natural surroundings and if, if you had to go an extra tier, yeah, sure, fine, two all, setback.
Yeah, and we've got room because, um, the planning board put a, um, land use restriction that we're not gonna disturb this area.
Right, but you've got some, you've got some height there, you've got a dotted line there about.
Yeah.
Ten feet beyond the stone wall.
So we have a recorded covenant on this that we can't disturb this portion of the lot, so if he had to terrace it, it looks like there's, there's enough room to get something in there without going on to that.
I mean, if the grade's there at all close, he probably doesn't have to.
Yeah. Okay. All right. All right. All right, that's it. Sounds good. Dot the I, dot the I and cross the T on that one. Appreciate it.
Thank you, board members.
All right, thank you for your patience staying with us.
Yeah. Need to get it done. Thank you, Brian.
All right, have a good night.
You too, good night.
Okay, any other matters, board members?
Sixty-nine Foundry.
Okay.
What's going on with the landscape area and that second floor deck?
No idea. You tell me, you're playing on more than me?
No, I haven't been down there, so, you know, no one's asked us to look at it, so I assume nothing's happening. But yet, we had a, a fairly large meeting down there with the fire department, everybody, buddy else about releasing units and like. And so I'm thinking, we, we gotta be getting close to totally complete.
We haven't issued them anything that we're ready yet, have we?
No, I mean, you, you, you've got the agreement with them, here's what, he, he sent me an email today, um, so. He said, this week I'm applying for the fifty-fourth CO, which includes all sixty-one, phase one, two, okay? So they, they, they're getting up to their limit, so they're, they're saying to me, what's the process? Once we, once we get to the limit, the process is, let's give us an update, that's all, okay.
Process is to be finished.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, it's not the limit, it's the amount, it's, they're at the point where they have to designate the five units, if you remember, that they're at that point. But Jim, I, you know what I'll do, Jim, I'll send them an email tomorrow and I'll copy you saying that you want an update on, on the status of, of the work.
Yeah, I mean, it's, uh, you know, it's, it's May, they can get planning materials, they can be, they can be out working on that deck right now, I would think.
And maybe they are.
Maybe they are. Yeah, uh, Mr. Chair, I'll send an email to you, uh, Mr. McBane and, uh, the super there to get an update, that you, you'll get it.
Send it on to our landscape architect, Mr. Chip Tarbell, please. Did he fall asleep on me?
No, I, I don't wanna, I, I don't, I can't do an email with three board members, cuz that becomes an issue. Yeah.
You can leave me off of it.
Yeah.
That's all right, I'll send it to him.
Yeah.
Whether he responds or not is another matter.
Probably not.
All right, anything else? Any other clerk or board comments, any other matters?
I moved that we approved the minutes of, uh, can I even remember, April? Twentieth?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth, as written.
Second.
Do you, any discussion? All right, all in favor, Chip?
Yes.
Amy?
Hi.
Jim?
Hi.
Joe?
Hi.
Tom?
Hi.
Greg?
Hi.
And, um, oh, Mike's not here, uh, and I approve, okay, that's unanimous, thank you, well done again, Gail.
Thank you.
Super, twenty-one pages of minutes.
Yeah, it's a lot of fun.
Oh, I, I know, yeah, um, all right. With that.
I still question the need of minutes, was it all being recorded, but that's okay.
Yeah, they want them posted online.
I know, I know, post the recording online, here you go, watch it yourself. Have the fun we have.
Yep.
I moved that we adjourn.
Second.
Any discussion? You sure?
Made it out before eleven.
Yes, Amy?
Hi.
Jim?
I'm thinking about it. Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
And I'm, yes, okay, thank you again for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, this evening, um, and Brian and everyone else who was in attendance, this meeting is adjourned, have a good night.
Thank you.